All right, so Elizabeth, it can be recorded by Paul?
I'm sorry, sorry, Mayor, incorrect.
Incorrect. Okay, what's your update, Elizabeth?
Hold on, I will record the meeting.
Okay.
No, it's okay, I'm recording it. It's not bad, it's fine.
Okay, and John, if you can, are you gonna pull up the?
Yes, I'm just trying to find it.
I did, if you check your email, I only sent it like a few minutes ago.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, everybody.
I need to confirm what budget to pull up.
Tinkah Shaw is entering the meeting at 10:05.
David, I'm sorry, I'm looking for one that has the tax cap calculated. I'm just, give me a moment.
John, I think the most recent one was distributed by trustee Shaw on the ACE, and it has the tax cap on the right hand.
We're gonna start with the one that was distributed.
That's not the one that was posted and distributed?
Correct, we're gonna start with the one that you received from Elizabeth.
Sorry, I had my speaker turned down, sorry.
Can you turn your speaker off, Elizabeth, please?
It's off.
Paul, do you wanna throw it up?
Well, I'm not sure, I was working off the one that was most recently distributed.
Okay.
I'll try and.
John, does it, my speaker is on?
Your speaker is on, Elizabeth.
I know, I just turned it on, but my point is if I don't turn the speaker on, then I can't hear anything.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the tentative budget that you could throw up on the screen? Or could you work with John to get that done? I'll start, I'll start comments. I wanna thank Tinkah Shaw and John Ledwith. They worked diligently on this budget. And also Elizabeth and Debbie. Debbie gave us time, she's coming to help train Elizabeth on the budget process. And I wanna thank the chief for submitting his budget, as well as Jeff Boss. We're starting out in good shape, in the sense that we are about $300,000 under the 2% property tax cap. And that is without supplementing it with any unappropriated surplus. And also, just for those that are listening and for the trustees, there's nothing on here that is not subject to change. There's a lot of assumptions, which I think you want to discuss, that I made. And there's also a lot of plug numbers. The sewer multiple, for example, is a plug number. The chief salary number, which we can discuss in executive session, is a plug number. And there's others, as we're gathering information, and the information is coming in. We distributed, most recently, project lists, the near interest, the WNS interest, in terms of this budget year. And what I'd like to do is we have the tentative budget that's posted on the website, and was distributed by Elizabeth last week. And then we have a working draft that was distributed by Tinkah and/or Elizabeth yesterday. And to that, there's a legend or key that goes line by line, explaining what was done between the tentative budget that was distributed last week, what I'm calling the formal budget, and the current worksheet. And I thought we'd go through that first to get us up to the current worksheet, and then begin the process, if that's okay with everybody. So, Tinkah, I'm gonna have you go through, bringing us from the tenant, the formal tentative budget, to the worksheet budget that we've distributed. Let's see, do we have Tinkah on the line?
Sorry, hi, sorry, I had to unmute.
No problem.
Okay, so, does anybody have any questions about the changes that we listed, that we made from one budget to the other?
I'm good.
Why don't you walk us through it, make it easier? Twenty what, nine line items?
Right, so we had erroneously put the recreation line in appropriations, so we moved that into revenues, that 2000, whatever, 2001A. And we, based on Max's calculations, that we would make 10,000 on recreation, instead of the five. So, and then the next.
Sorry, just to be clear, this is a revenue number, so this isn't a make number, this is a revenue associated with fees with the WeWah Beach Club? It's not a net number, this is a gross number, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, we will make?
No, 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 it's a gross number, but it's a plug number, to be discussed. So there's essentially, the correction that was made was an estimate of up to $10,000 in revenue, and an allocation, an appropriation of $5,000 for upgrade.
Got it.
Right. Further down in 714040 is where the appropriations would be. And then, the line item for 2122 sewer charges, we moved that into the sewer budget, so it's not a revenue in the general fund.
Sorry, what is?
An appropriation in the general fund.
Right.
Is that the 208?
No, no, it wasn't, it was a revenue item before. 2122 was a revenue item for sewer, but we moved that into sewer fund, revenues. And then the note.
So, just so we're clear, this is what we currently charge Tuxedo Park School, I believe that's it, isn't it?
I think there are in that.
The 20?
2122, I think that includes some residents as well, in the sewer charges.
Can John confirm it, and can we confirm whether or not we build people this year for this? Given we're 20, 15% of budget?
We can confirm that by the end of the day. There are approximately three town residents that we bill for sewer, in addition to the park school.
And have we billed yet, or not?
I have not confirmed this, I don't do the billing for that, but we can confirm it before the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
And then, so number four, insurance, we, everybody is aware, I guess, the letter that we've got from the insurance broker, that it'll go up between 25% to 30%, the village insurance.
Yeah, a little further on that. So, we put that in, in anticipation, however, it's a plug number, in the sense that we might switch. We've been in contact with Marshall and Sterling, and we've given them a lot of backend information that they asked for. The dam reports, salaries, last year's budget, this year's tentative budget, and a variety of other things, so that he could start shopping for us. Sterling and Marshall is a broker. And, but in terms of the tentative budget, we put a plug in, based on what the increase will be, because we wanted to make sure it was accounted for, but we won't be getting the actual number in, unless we continue with this company, if in fact, we go with another insurer.
All right, just a question on that point, and it's probably my confusion more than anything is, you've increased it to 85K, but they're talking, in their email to the board, was that it was going to be renewal premium between 107,000 and 112,000. So, I'm a little bit puzzled. One part is Trident, but our overall is changing, plus our.
Pretty good, sir, I will.
Does anybody have some clarity on that one?
Alan, part of that might be, and we would get into.
You know, I'm gonna budget even right now.
The. Amount.
A quarter after 11.
Water department.
John, can you turn your mic off?
The, made in the general budget.
11, yeah, 11, 1150 before.
But there was no allocation for budget, so there's a chunk of that belongs in the water budget as well. That may be part of it.
Do people think that's the case?
Yeah, Debbie said yes, if you look on page four, there is unallocated insurance also, in the water fund.
So we're putting 85K in the general, and then 15 plus 25 is in the water, basically, is how we're doing it, right?
As a plug?
As a, yeah.
Until we get the other information in, if we're fortunate enough to get a reduction.
Right, okay, no problem, thank you.
Sure. Okay, is that it? Oh, the sewer consultant, I think, is the number nine, is that the only one left?
No, we thought lakes management.
Oh, right, sorry. I'll handle that one. So, the general fund had 30,000 last year, for the WeWah and Pond 3. And the water budget had 100 last year, for lakes management. And so, I questioned why we have 30,000, why the lakes aren't together. And I looked up in the code with John, we found that the WeWah and Pond 3 are considered our reserve water supply, which made me think that it will be worthwhile to pull it out of the general fund, get 30,000 off that, and bring it over to the water department. And before I did that, I contacted Andrew Arias, and ran it by him, and he supported it. So it gives us the benefit of taking 30,000 out of the general fund. And then, when we get to this, when we get to the actual appropriation of that line, and as to why it says 80, we can discuss those assumptions at that time, but that's why it was moved from general fund.
All right, so we're gonna discuss this at a later data set?
Well, I mean, let's just establish this, and then we'll go, we'll go line by line on all the assumptions of anything that you wanna discuss. Good?
It's a plan, yep, that's a plan, sorry.
All right, so do we have, the sewer consultant is the last item, I believe.
Wait, wait, no, we have a couple of other things.
Okay.
So, number six, for the recreation, that also has to do with WeWah, that's where we allocated 5,000 for improvements. And then, 8130418, the town sewer charge, it, we didn't really understand why that was not part of the police budget, because it's only for the police buildings, that it's built a thousand a year by the town. So, we thought it was more appropriate for that to be part of the police budget than the general budget. And then the next item is 813050INI, that we moved to the sewer budget. And the number, the 208, well, whatever, the 205 comes from the Western and Sampson required items. I forget, but you all have the Western and Sampson list of projects, but that's from mandatory things that we have to do there. And then, 3,000, which is mandatory also, in the water department, for the dam certification on an annual basis. And just so, so we're all on the same page, from the Western and Sampson, it's item number nine and 10, that brings us up to that 205,000. And then, the sewer consultant, that's Western and Sampson, highly recommended that we engage a consultant to establish rates, and also to see us through the legality, or whatever we have to do, to establish the sewer department. And then, the COVID-19 grant, that we added 65,000 to the revenue of the general fund.
All right, I'll comment on that. I don't know if you read, Paul sent us a guidance from NITCOM?
Yep.
Which, I don't know if you saw that, but they recommend we don't even put it into the budget, until we have more clarity on how we can spend it, and so forth. Now, to that end, yesterday, I also contacted Brian, and asked him, not knowing Paul, you were gonna send that, to research how we could spend it. But I agree with Paul, that we should take it out, because we do not have clarity as to what we can spend it on, and they recommend not even putting it in budget. So, I think we should take that out, does everyone agree?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so let's take that out.
Yes.
And now, I'm wondering if Debbie is going to make track of these changes, so that at the end of the meeting, we can have something with all of the changes on it, that are discussed? So, that should come out. Now, that would bring us, with that exception, to the budget that you were referring to, Paul. If we, John, if you can put that up, that's the latest one, that shows the changes we just made?
The April, the one that we sent out yesterday, right?
And so, we can pull that up, and then we can start.
All right.
Okay, John, can you pull that up for us?
I only see the.
Right, John's gonna pull it up for us. So maybe we go around the horn, Paul, everyone sort of ask, comment on the same line, then we can respond. Perfect. Thank you. All right, so, why don't we start with you, Paul? Do you have, why don't you start with your first questions, then we'll go around the horn?
Well, I said, I don't really have anything till I'm about halfway down that first page.
Okay, how about you, Alan?
So if anyone has anything before that?
Right, anybody have anything before halfway down, which line, Paul?
Sale of equipment.
Okay.
So which are we doing?
Sale of equipment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have something before that.
Okay.
And I guess it goes to, goes to part of the constellation of issues dealing with WeWah Beach Club, and the $10,000 revenue number from the, for recreation.
Right.
So, I know that's something, under some discussion, and some back and forth with the beach club, but from a budgetary perspective, I guess my issue here is that I'm not really understanding how we, how we are booking funds in of 10,000, without addressing the same sort of budgetary expenses that the WeWah Beach Club would have, in terms of operation, if we were gonna operate, such as lifeguards. So, if there's, you know, sort of a plan, or a budget, or a proposal, that would address that, perhaps that could be.
Right, so, so this is, this is again, a plug number.
Right.
Up to 10. And, you know, there's, I think that we need to put something in the budget, to get the conversation started. And for example, if we decide that the, the village will not manage the property, then we would eliminate that line, and the expense. And we would insert the lease fee, which currently is proposed $1,000. And there's also hybrid models that have been discussed, such as sharing the responsibility, and so forth. The idea is that $1,000 of income is a loss to the village. And as fiduciaries, it's our responsibility to optimize that property. So, the WeWah Beach Club had $30,000 in membership last year, and did not have any money left over. And one of their expenses is insurance. And so, the assumption is that if we use our insurance, we will make more than the $1,000. So you could do the following, if you want. You could put it at $3,000, which would be $2,000 more than we would make if the WeWah Beach Club manages it. And you could then change the amount of money that you would put into infrastructure improvements. As it currently stands, the rates that the WeWah Beach Club charges aren't sufficient to allow for any money to make improvements, and that's been demonstrated year after year. So, the $10,000, the up to $10,000 would include a raising of fees, and so forth, but it's hypothetical, and the assumption is that, since we have our own insurance, and since we could raise fees, we might be able to bring in a couple thousand dollars, rather than $1,000. So, under this strategy, as you know, as I've said numerous times in the memos, the village would take out the health permit, and the WeWah Beach Club would have the same access as they've requested, which is 1 o'clock to 8 o'clock, or until dusk. In this case, the fees would go to us. We would be in control of collecting the fees, marketing, bringing in new members, raising the fee to a number that would justify putting in money annually for improvements. So, Paul, to answer your question, these are plug numbers, and it's only one of many scenarios. For example, as a fiduciary, we are responsible for making revenue when we can, for the taxpayer. And also, there's a tradition here of having hamlet members, and to respect both of those things, the village running it is a win-win, because they would get the same terms and conditions that they have now. However, the village would have an opportunity, not a guarantee initially, but an opportunity to make money. If in fact, we decide not to run the WeWah, I would suggest we would then charge a higher number than the 1,000, not to just break even, but to make money. And then also, what I would suggest is, we require them in the lease to put a certain amount of money into repairs, maintenance, new equipment. So, this would then give them the impetus to raise the fee.
Right, so Mayor?
Yes.
If I can, so, I think, I think the discussion of what to do with the WeWah Beach Club this season, is a sort of separate discussion. I'd say that I don't, I for one, don't really agree with the approach you outlined, but for budgetary purposes, since what we're doing here is creating a budget, and what we need to do is create a budget with reasonable expectations, reasonable assumptions, excuse me. I would sort of just say two things. One, where we are right now, is we don't have any of that really in place, or agreed to, what we have as a state of facts of, you know, as it was yesterday, so it is today. And there is, there really isn't, you know, sort of a new local law, or other arrangements in place that would address the issues that would have to be addressed in order to, in order to effectuate those things. Nor is there, nor is there sort of board sanction of that. So I would say, you know, the reasonable, the reasonable projection to take, from today's perspective, is, is to put those things perhaps in the budget when they occur, but before they occur, not to.
I completely agree, yeah, I completely agree. I wanted to start the conversation.
Let me just mentally, and secondary, if it is going in, you know, I do think there is kind of a mismatch between revenues in and expenses out, and that sort of should have to be addressed.
Well, I mean, if you, I mean, you've made that statement, why don't you justify it?
Sure, so for example, our expenses that we show for the beach club and recreation, I think, are $5,000. We know that the last year, that the beach club spent, oh, what did they spend? On payroll, about $20,000 for lifeguards. So I assume, you know, that would, for example, be an expense that the, you know, the beach club, we would have to, we were going to, if we were gonna take 10,000 in, we'd have to pay out, you know, lifeguard fees as well.
Sure.
In addition, we'd have the same sort of.
You mean if we took the 30,000, we're taking in 30. We would be taking in 30, that was the membership that they earned last year.
All right, so the number, so then it's a difference in numbers then, because we have 10 in on this budget, and 5.
Yeah, I was told 30 last year, when I met with the WeWah Beach representatives.
Right, they took in 30, and essentially, you know, sort of broke even, but our budget was just taking in 10 and spending 5, so.
Well, actually, it was actually, I think it was more that you were thinking.
Yeah, I'm talking about the markup we would make, not what we're taking in.
Right, you, so Mac, that was your projection, is that we would net 10?
Right, we would take in the same 30, and we would make up to $10,000, rather than break even, which is what the WeWah Beach Club is doing, and of that 10, up to 10, we would spend 5.
So, based on.
So I guess to go back to Alan McHugh's question, the answer is, it was not, it's not, it's net, it's not gross.
Okay, so, but it should probably, to Paul's point, it probably should be gross, right? Okay. So but it should probably lead to Paul's point. It probably should be gross, right?
Yes, that's correct. You're right.
Well, it it.
If if the my argument, it should be an intake of 30 and a spending of five.
No.
And then we would also have to include the other expenses, but we're not there yet, guys. This is just a placeholder uh, to start the discussion. And uh, it's important that we have it now. And I believe, as Paul does, um, that it it's a good fallback position now to just bring in the estimated $1,000 in income and zero for spending. And that's the, and that would be based on the fact that the the village would not run the We What Beach Club.
But Da- David, I I'm getting confused because I thought you just had 10,000 revenue and 10,000 expenses. So it's a complete wash, which I have no problem with because I agree it's a place marker till further discussions of uh, and there's been a resolution one way. So why don't we just keep it as a wash as is?
Uh, that's, well, right now it's actually 10 and 5, but.
Votes produced.
Yeah, I I think I think, I mean, my vote would be to do the, we've got the discussion going. We're going to have that discussion. We can always come back uh, between, I mean, we're going to have to finalize this negotiation very quickly. So that um, if we do not run it, they can get started. And we have a contract in front of us that they proposed. Um, and so we can always come back uh, e- even after the public hearing if we need to and change it. And at that point, we would have to do an actual, we we will put in real numbers, not plug numbers. And as Tinka said, that would include membership income, cost of the lifeguards, the $200 for the permit, et cetera. Um, but since it's only an idea and a plug number, I I would agree with Paul that we should just put in the $1,000, Paul, if that's what you're saying.
But, okay.
That would be the $1,000 we would earn from the lease and no uh, appropriations, because they don't have money to appropriate.
Now, I thought though that you had said 1,000 was not enough that you you would.
Well, my my personal view in the in the negotiation, you know, again, as a fiduciary, I don't think it's responsible to lose money.
Right.
Leasing this property. Um, and at the same time, there's your tradition, which I want to honor. And that's why I think that the village is in a better position to run this than the We What Beach Club, because we don't have the same overhead. And uh, we also have funds to improve it and they don't. So to me, it's a win-win. But yeah, so if we decide not to run it, uh, and then I think we should ask for money that so we can make money on it, on the deal. Uh, I don't think it's fair not to do that. So rather than charging 1,000, let's charge four, five or 6,000 and and that and give them the impetus. I brought it up already. They said they would go bankrupt if we did that. And uh, they should, they need to raise their fees then. Something's not right, that every year they they don't make any money.
I know.
And uh, don't have any money to put into repairs. So uh, Paul, what do you want to do?
Well, again, I I sort of go back, I go back to the proposition as a, you know, as a, what we try and do in budgets is, you know, to some extent, incorporate policies, but but budgets, I I think have to have to take account of the here and now and the current situation. So I.
So we agree.
Yeah. So I think we we leave it as is or leave it as 1,000 and the discussions on this will go where they will go.
Correct. I hundred percent. So what I'd like to do, to instruct Debbie to do, is to remove the revenue from recreation. So there's no revenue coming in uh, except the $1,000 unless it, last year, did you, what line item did you use for? Did you use contractual? What did you use to put the the $1 in? Paul and Alan, last year when we got a dollar, where did you show it as revenue?
Was 2411 and license agreement fees.
Okay, so in that, we should put the 1,000. And we should also uh, delete the $5,000 in appropriations for infrastructure improvements. Is that okay with you, Paul?
That makes sense to me.
Alan?
Yeah, I mean, I I I see this as, yeah. Inconsequential in the the extent of the discussions we're having. So it's a, it's a separate issue that needs to be resolved, but I don't see, really, it's a $5,000 delta we're talking about. So I'm happy if you want to leave it as is to make life easy.
Okay. Uh, Chris?
I I'm okay with moving it back to $1,000 from now until we get for the resolution.
Yeah, and we're all right. We're all on the same page with that. It's really six, one half dozen the other. All right. Um. So wanna, are we good with that one?
Oh, sorry.
All right. So let's continue down the line.
Actually, can we go back up to one?
We we are, we have already in 2411A, there is 2,000 budgeted.
What's that? What's the other 1,000?
Some of it is for the fishing club. License and.
That's the We What Fishing Club.
Okay, so that's 2,000?
In there.
Yeah, the David, the difference is the fishing club pays annual fee, but more importantly, they do fish stocking uh, on barrel and dime.
Right.
So it's slightly.
Okay, good. So it's already in the, it's already in, is what you're saying, Tinka?
Uh, y- yes, right, Debbie, in the We What. I I think so. Uh, that's what was budgeted last year, so I don't know.
Well, the 2,000, Alan, is is just the, just the fishing club?
Uh, that was what was in the budget last year. Um, and um.
Last last year, you guys had 2,000 in.
I I I believe that was a a grand, sorry. That's predominantly the fishing club, yes, because I think we only charged a dollar and we agreed for this upcoming fiscal year, we were gonna uh, well, the the beach club would have had to get their license before our fiscal year end. So we were gonna, we had notionally put in $1,000, what would be the fee for this upcoming season.
Right, right. And that's, that's what I've been using in discussions with.
Correct.
Okay, so um, let's just get this line down pat. Um, so do we believe Tinka and or Debbie that the $1,000 that we were just referencing is included in line 2411A? Or do we need to add that to the 2,000?
My guess is since we only charged a dollar last year for that, it's not included. So we should up that.
Uh huh.
Uh, yeah, I would add, um, and.
Alan, do you agree with that?
Sorry, what was the statement? I apologize.
Okay, so the uh, online item 2411A, license agreement fees for 2,000. Um, do you believe that we should, that's an accurate number for uh, income from the fishing club?
So. How come it's so high, the three, seven, three?
You know what?
It's what we use, we we took your figure from last year.
Yeah, and and I guess the question is why we have 3873 this year? And I don't have an answer for that. Why do we have double the amount? I don't know.
I I don't know either. I have to, uh, let me, I I'll go check.
Okay, we'll go check on that one. Okay, uh, moving on. Chris, Paul, or Alan?
Yeah, I I question, oh, sorry, Chris, yours.
I'm just, I just want to move up real quick, just a quick question about clerk fees. And it's not a whole lot, but it it is a difference on mine, uh, 1255. So we budgeted 300, proposed 300 for this year. We proposed 300 for last year, but you know, each year made less than 1,000. And in 2017 and 18, it was over 700 and $600. I'm just wondering what what those fees are for.
My guess, and it's entirely a guess, is we used to probably charge for notary fees and things like that. And photoc- photocopying, things along those lines. That's a guess.
Right.
There's no notary fees. It may be something else, but.
Uh, is it, is it uh, advertisement in uh, Conterell Record?
Maybe foil.
File, file is bigger number than that, isn't it?
So uh, we we just carried this over. Um, Debbie gave us the nod on carrying it over. Um, so we didn't, we didn't change the category of what makes it up.
Okay, can we jump to another line item?
Sure. So we're good there on that?
Well, I think it should be accurate. I mean, 300 estimate when we brought in less than $100, should, we should at least.
Well, there there is, there is a rationale to that. Um, like, it's the same rationale that we use when we set the licensing revenue projection and others, because it benefits the taxpayer.
Okay. All I want to know is what the $69 was for this year and the 71 for last year. So if the clerk treasurer said to me, then I'll I'll feel good. I know what I'm voting on.
I think it was gum and candy in that bowl.
So do you get confirmation on that? I'm all for it.
It probably um, uh, foil requests, that's and copies.
Okay, if you can just confirm later and rely on probablys, I'm all for it.
At least pick something over 10.
All right. Uh, I had a question, line item 1128, county sales tax, just wondering what the methodology was there? Top of the page.
Uh, that comes from the county.
Right. But they they don't give us an estimation of the following year. I'm just wondering how the decision was made on the this number.
Right. What line item?
1128.
Right. Uh, I I would have to defer to Debbie.
So do you want me to just give you my two cents?
Absolutely.
Um, historically, we've looked at it on a three and a five-year moving average.
Right.
The number was very large. Last year, when we were doing our budgeting, we slashed it because of COVID.
Right.
That's why we dropped it down to 65K. Obviously, we've gotten 10K more. Do we have one more check coming in, Elizabeth, or not?
I'm sorry, I didn't, uh.
Do we have one more check coming in on the county sales tax? When's the last one you received?
I I, um, I'd have to check. I just don't know.
All right. If you could double check on that, so my personal opinion is you've got Legoland opening, you've got the reopening of stores and everything. I think that number is light. My personal opinion is you should bump it up to 100K, which reflects prior years. And we can say some of it's, you know, post-COVID hangover, but more importantly, you've got the reopening of opening of the Legoland, so that should be.
Yeah, I I think you're right. I think you're right. I would definitely, I I that would, I'd be comfortable doing that.
I agree with that.
How about everyone else?
Okay.
Yeah, it's been 100,000 or higher the previous three years.
So can I just say something? Um, I I uh, brought up QuickBooks now. Uh, we have gotten three checks for county sales tax so far. The last one was um, February 4th.
How much was it?
Uh, it was 70, it the, it was 28,650.
All right. So that takes us up, assuming with the reopening, everything, we're going to get additional 30, so it's going to get us up to 105, so.
Right. So I think we, and as Chris just said, if you look at uh, 2019, 20, and and, you know, we we could, that was pre-COVID. I like the thinking. I think we should, I mean, you guys, are you comfortable with 120?
I I'm not had, comfortable with 120. I'm happy doing uh, our historical average and be pleasantly surprised. So I'd go 105. I'm certainly happy with.
Yeah. How about everyone else?
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
With 105?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a good pickup. Okay, what next? Alan, Paul, Chris?
Yeah, I guess, I I guess we needed to discuss court fines. We've just assumed that we're going back the new normal, I guess. You know, the question is.
I'm sorry, Alan, I didn't catch it. What are you referring to?
Court fines, line item 26.
Court, right. Okay, yeah, that's a, yeah, that's an issue. There there's a couple of things in play there. Um, I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we can expect the same revenue from tickets.
Agreed.
Um, we're giving a lot more warnings than tickets. And so that's a philosophical matter, although it's really not up to us, it's up to the police. But uh, they, you know, we we have continued with this, with this, with the cases, criminal cases, but not not the civil cases. So that's a real guess, but I mean, I I appreciate you bringing that up. I think that's definitely, it's up for discussion. I mean, I I really don't have confidence in uh, picking a number, so I just carried it over. But you're right, there could be more activity.
Well, I I was actually going where you were going originally, where I think the number's a little bit high. I'd reduce it. The only thing I'd say is false fire alarms and things like that, which tax the police but don't do. Maybe we increase the false alarm fee.
Right. And the question is, are we collecting, billing and collecting those?
I believe we are. Uh, but we can, we can double check that with the chief.
And the only, the only reason I would leave it and not reduce it is for the same reason I mentioned, how we manage the uh, the tag fees and so forth. It's a benefit to the taxpayer. Um, but but if we're talking, and and so if we're talking a few thousand, I wouldn't change it. But if if you want to go back down to, you know, something significantly lower, like in the actual from 19 to 20 was 13, we could go down to 15.
I I was talking 10, because I think what what the chief's trying to achieve, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, we're trying to get people to behave without uh, suffering economic consequences. And to a degree, that seems to be working. So yeah, let let's just take a little bit more realistic number. And and basically then it becomes a wash when you look at the court clerk and the judge fees.
Right, right. And uh, yeah, no, I understand the logic. I think it it it's fine. Um, a- again, I I will just defer to a 10,000 number. I mean, it's a guess, but uh, I'm I'm not uncomfortable with it. I don't know. Let's go around the horn. Does everyone understand what we're talking about here? Comment? Okay, so I I guess.
Yeah, just I'm looking at the the history back 2017, as far back as I'm looking. And the lowest it's been is $12,000. We make an assumption that it wouldn't go lower than pre. You know, then since 2017, then I'd be okay.
We could do that. But but Alan's point is we're not, we're probably not, it probably will be lower. Um. So uh, because of of the philosophy about the chief is implemented about speeding, so uh, I'm good with 10 or or for anything but from 10 to 15, I'm good with, you know.
Yeah, I I mean, 10, 10 is close to that 12. I'm okay with the 10 if we think that's.
Okay. Uh, anyone else have a a concern about that? Okay, so let's lower that to 10. Thank you, Alan. Uh, let's move on. Um.
Um, can I say something?
Please.
Um, I do have information now about the clerk fees, if you're interested.
Sure.
Uh, that was comprised of um, four foil requests, four copies that were made. People were probably here and wanted to use the photocopy machine and death certificates.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, death certificate is the biggest part of that. That was $140.
Okay.
Sorry, but our, our revenue is $69. So how how do we reconcile that?
Because the court, I mean, the clerk fees?
Yeah.
I see 16185.
I see 69 in year to date.
Same.
What am I?
Alan, it's a wash, the register. Oh, so um, just uh, the registrar, the death certificate fee is a wash. I give, we get some in and then it goes out. Uh, there's some sort of arrangement with the, with town.
That I didn't realize. Sorry.
It's four files and four copies then, right?
That's correct.
And is this just file requests to at the village clerk's office, or is this also file request to go to the police department?
Just the village clerk.
Does the, does the police department collect a fee for files?
I don't know.
Chief, do you charge for foil?
Debbie says yes, they do.
Yes. So it would be in the police budget.
Do we know what the file fee request is, out of curiosity? 20 bucks?
I think it's 25 cents per page if we have to give them a photocopy, and I think it's a dollar for DVD.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so it's it's a. Okay, so it's, it's, uh, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Debbie says that, uh, it would come out, uh, when the police has foil requests, it comes out of, uh, fifteen twenty-eight. It goes into that, sorry, goes into that.
Fifteen twenty.
Police fees slash.
A, police fees, TP tags.
Correct, yeah.
That's the way the chart of accounts has been used. Don't ask.
And that seems a little high. I don't know if we should keep it at that, the police fees and tags.
Uh, which one, twenty?
Uh, fifteen twenty, A, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, again, that's, uh, to the advantage of the taxpayer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's why we carried it over from year to year, starting as far back as you can see here.
Yeah.
So I don't recommend we change that.
So, oh, so let me ask you something here, because I got a little confused on, it's the line item fifteen twenty-eight that. We agreed to reduce to, um, to ten, no.
No.
It was the line item below.
It was for the court fees?
Court fees, yeah, so line item twenty-six, ten. You have that, John?
What's the number?
Twenty-six, ten, is the court fines is what we. Reduced to ten thousand.
Okay, thank you.
That's okay.
Yes, thank you. Right, Alan?
Yes, correct.
Going down to ten, yeah.
Agreed, yeah. Hey, with, with the proviso, we, somebody was going to research what, uh, false, false alarms.
Right, to make sure we're billing that, yeah.
One, we're billing, and two is discuss whether or not we're billing inappropriate among.
Right, I, absolutely, so I think that, uh, yes, and now, for example. Um, after we approve a budget for the public hearing. We're still able to make small changes, uh, without having another public hearing, and I would consider. That to be, uh, not a substantial change. Um, would you agree?
Are we going to do?
We decide to, in, in other words, if we decide to increase the fee by five bucks.
Yeah, no, no, I guess my question.
It would be a substantive change to have another public hearing.
Correct, are we going to have a discussion about the fee schedules of all our fees like we did last year or not?
That's, I'm definitely open to that.
Not that I can remember them, but it just simplifies like, then.
Yeah, no, I, we raised, we raised a certain number of fees last year. Um, I have not done an analysis if it increased for production or, uh. Usage or any of those types of things. Um.
Yeah.
I know that we didn't get any complaints.
Yeah, it was certificate of origins.
Right, the C, CBOs.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's, that's where we traveled it, and obviously it was a huge line item this year.
Right, yes, absolutely. Okay, so, uh, let's continue. Uh, anyone with a question?
I just wanted to answer, so we have put it to bed. Um, false alarm fees.
Yes.
They're in the village code, and Debbie says that they, uh, that Denise bills for that. And it goes, uh, in, into line item fifteen twenty-eight.
Fifteen twenty-eight, okay, and Alan, do you want a breakdown, or are you just, you're satisfied with that?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not worried about, I, I'm more interested in whether or not the fee's appropriate and.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, that, that, that.
Do you know what we charge off the top of your head now? For the second.
I don't, and Denise doesn't think so. I thought it was like one hundred and twenty dollars, but I could be way off.
I have, okay, yeah, I'm interested in that too, for a further discussion.
Your way off.
Yeah, why do you have a lot?
No, I mean, if there's a lot, then they should be charged appropriately, so they can fix their alarm system, but one or two.
How, how often does the volunteer fire department go out? I mean, is this a frequent thing?
Well, I, you know, and that would be billed from the fire department, not anything to do with the village, but.
Okay.
We, we went to TPS probably ten times in a year for false alarms and never charged them.
Oh.
I think that we charge seventy-five.
Not a village issue, that's a fire department issue.
Oh, I think that we charge seventy-five dollars for a false alarm.
Right, and it, and here it says, the fourth. You, we only cha- charge after the fourth false alarm, uh, false alarm.
Ooh.
So.
Room for improvement.
The, yeah, the fourth one is fifty, and then e- every other one after that is seventy-five.
Oh, gosh, I think it is time to look at that, Alan. What do you charge, uh, Chris, do you know, for fire department?
I do not know.
Okay.
Um, but Debbie says it has to be changed, the local law has to be changed.
Right, correct, it would have, it would require a local law, yep, because it's in the code, okay, um. So, moving on, uh, Paul, uh, Alan, Chris?
Uh, I don't have anything for a while. I just, uh, just a place, just a reminder that in, uh, boo, boo, boo. Unnumbered COVID nineteen grant for sixty-five thousand, I think we're taking that out for the.
That's correct, that should be taken out. That is a lot, we, I just saw it, oh, there it is, it's, uh, code, there's no line associated with it.
Right.
Uh, COVID grant, we'll take that out, boom. We're working on formulas, right, so that'll, that'll adjust. Thank you, all right, let's delete that. Thank you for the reminder, Paul. All right, so, uh, what do we have next, folks? Can we delete that sixty-five?
Perfect.
Yeah, there we go, good, thank you.
The state, state aid, uh, mortgage tax.
Yes.
Um. You know, two thousand seventeen, that was fifty-six thousand dollars, and then it was one thirty-six, and only recently was it down to twenty-five. Um, do we know what percent of the mortgage tax that the county collects that we get?
I don't know, I don't know the formula. We just got our most, uh, we just got another, uh, letter from them, uh, another distribution from them. I don't know what formula they use, well.
Well, I'm just wondering if based on recent, uh, budgets that the state's been working on, if there's a potential that that goes up for us.
Oh, I, you'd have to talk to the governor. I, we haven't had any indication in writing from anyone that it's even being debated. And there's nothing from NITOM's, uh, uh, lobbying arm that's addressed that that I'm aware of either.
What, what line item are you referring to, Chris?
He's talking about revenue from, uh, mortgages?
It's three thousand five.
Sorry, what line item?
Three zero zero five.
Oh.
And that's a county thing, not, not a, a state thing. And from our expert Debbie here.
Right, and then.
I, I guess.
That's a combined chart of account number, unfortunately.
To Chris's point, um, Elizabeth or Debbie, uh, when's the last check we got? And do we have one more coming before fiscal year end? Given, given we've had record home sales, you would assume that state aid mortgage, there would be more to come.
Exactly, unfortunately, I mean, not unfortunately, but we had a lot of cash purchases, because that's exactly the exercise I went through, Alan. Uh, we had, I was expecting a num- a higher number, but we had a lot of cash purchases. Um.
What, what do you mean cash purchases?
Instead of.
Oh, you mean, sorry, buying a house with cash?
Right, right, rather than a mortgage.
Right, but it's Orange County, not just Tuxedo Park.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Right, so I guess, I'll, I'll re-ask the question is, is this a check we get quarterly or semi-annually? Debbie?
It's two a year.
Generally, two.
Two a year, and is this the twenty-two thousand, three fifty-one, uh, one or two payments?
One.
One, so obviously this number's way low.
I, I, I have no problem, uh, if you want to make that assumption.
Well.
It's an assumption, um, between now and, uh, the final budget, we might be able to get an accurate number.
So Debbie, what, what was it last year, the second check that we got versus the first check? Are, are they basically, is it, they're similar sums, or are they skewed?
I think the second payment last year was only like nine thousand dollars.
All right, so I, I would, from me personally, I would take last year's number of nine K or ten K. And take this number from twenty-five up to thirty-five K, assuming we're getting, we're going to be getting one additional check. We know. Uh, we've had a huge increase in home sales in Orange County, so I think confidence factor would be high, and we know that we're getting additional checking. So my, my gut would be, uh, and to Chris's point, you can bump that up by ten K with a high degree of confidence.
Hey, look, anytime you want to pump up revenue, I'll, I'll put down my, I'll put down my conservative bona fides. And, and let you do that.
Look, I, I think that's a safe assumption, you know, and it's, it was thirty-six thousand. It was thirty-one thousand in two thousand eighteen, it was fifty-six thousand in two thousand seventeen, and I think we all. Agree that we've had better home sales.
Mm-hmm, no, this is absolutely, I, I actually pointed this out in, in Amer's newsletter, that we were going to do much better this year on mortgages, but. Um, you know, I'm just trying to be conservative, but no, I, this is what the discussion's about, and I'm all for raising it, absolutely. Um, I would go to thirty-five, if, if, you're, you're thinking thirty-five, Alan and Chris?
I, I, I'm thinking, just using our methodology from what we received last year on the second check. That's a high degree of confidence. I think it's underestimating, but it's being conservative, so I would argue maybe we would take it up to thirty-five K.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm doing the last four-year average right now, give me one second, but.
Okay, Paul?
Top of my head, it seems.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Love it. Uh, so we'll hear from Chris about the average, and then, and then we'll, so tentatively, we're going to make it thirty-five, let's see what Chris has to say.
So last four-year average is thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, so should we go higher? Go to forty?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Okay, with thirty-five.
I, I'm not comfortable, I, 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 I think Chris is right, and probably two thousand sixteen, seventeen's. Probably the best reflection, but we've got the COVID effect, so I'm, I'm a little bit more cautious there, so I think ten is. A ninety percent degree confidence level, it's going to be that number or above, so I'd be, my gut would be, we stick with that.
Uh, Paul, you're good with it, right?
Yes.
And how about you, Tinka? Thumbs up, okay, let's go, thirty-five.
They take the total of.
Thirty-five, all right. Uh, next.
Okay. So we are. So just so we're clear, why, why do we have a hundred and thirty thousand K drop in real estate property taxes?
John?
Which line item are you referring to? I'm sorry.
Our adopted budget, well, let's do year-to-date, we're at, uh, real estate property taxes of three hundred and three point seven million. Uh, we're budgeting three point five million, so why, why do we have a hundred and seventy negative delta?
We, uh, moved the sewer department revenues.
So we're saying that the fees we collect from the, a, that we implicitly charged in the sewer. Is a hundred and seventy K, is that what we're saying? Or that's what you're saying?
No, the, the sewer budget is three hundred and approximately twelve thousand dollars a year.
Right, so the question is, if, why are you taking a hundred and seventy K out?
Alan? Can I try and answer that?
You can try.
Try. That, if I'm remembering correctly, that, that number is a, i- i- is a plug number. That's the number that has to be raised from real estate taxes after all other revenues are considered, and all other expenses are considered. So if you, if you bump up your expenses by ten thousand, and you don't have a separate revenue source for it. That real estate taxes will go up by ten thousand, so it, it's a number that, that fills in the gap of what has to be.
So, so you're saying this is entirely formulaic?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the hundred and seventy argument is not valid then, that it was a hundred and seventy K of sewer charges?
Yes, correct.
Okay?
Good.
So, we're, we're, th- then, then I apologize to belabor a point, because maybe I'm just missing something. If this doesn't include sewer charges, and we're taking a separate. Line item budget and creating a revenue source for sewer and expense source for sewer, why aren't the taxes going down? By the cost of the sewer department, what am I missing?
Uh, yeah.
You have to look at appropriations.
Definitely affects the bottom line.
If there are other, there are other, uh, uh, revenue items and other appropriations, right?
Right.
So, not just sewer.
Let's, you know what, let's, let's, uh, let's keep it as an open question now, and while we gather more information.
Well.
Okay.
That's what I, I scratched my head over this a little bit too, because we have a, a separate sewer budget now, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, the sewer budget.
Mm-hmm.
Has.
Let's flip over to the sewer budget?
H five.
Has about. Oh, six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, that would be. Collected from, um. Sewer, new sewer charges.
Mm-hmm.
And. So that's overall, in terms of what the village spends. Is sort of a six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar increase?
Uh, well, this, you've, you've got, I don't really know what your question is, but this includes, uh. Maintenance costs and projected future project cost. Um, so when you're, when you're looking at, uh, you're setting your fees based on this. Um, you have an option of taking seed money in. Um, which would go from, uh, the water department, in our case, to the general budget, and then into the sewer fund. Uh, so that you're not capturing all those, you, you're not putting that burden, uh, on the first year of billing. But this goes back over twelve months, and also goes forward with new projects. And, um, you know, we can, we can go over that in a lot more detail, if you want, but. Uh, that, that's my, that's my understanding of your question.
True.
Right.
I, I guess we should probably go into more detail, maybe we get to the sewer budget, but in, in terms of the context we're in now. My, I, I guess I'm just trying to confirm what I think I'm seeing here, which is that. Uh, in terms of total revenues to be raised from, um. Village residents, both in real estate taxes and, um, from sewer charges. It is the real estate tax amount, the three, five, three, six. Plus the six, nine, one.
So your question is what? Because we raise money in water also, so the residents pay water and sewer and.
Correct, correct, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand and track the change from the former. From the general funds, right, we were used to have sewer and water, sewer and.
Just sewer, yeah.
Sewer and.
And now we have general and sewer. So we have, we have our real estate taxes that are the three. Um, that are the three, five, three, six. Right, and then we have a separate set of charges, the six hundred and ninety-one thousand, which is going to pay. The six hundred and ninety-one thousand in, in sewer charges. Is that sort of the way this works now?
Well, we moved items from the general fund over to, to the sewer department.
Right.
Where we.
We, we, we also, just so that you know the logic, we, we went line by line with this with Andrew Arias. And have his blessing. Um, but in terms of the tax formulas, that's, I have to defer that to someone else.
I mean, the tax formula, yes, it is definitely, that you're right, Paul, that is what you have to add, I'm, I mean, what you have to raise to cover the expenses. Um.
Okay, let's, we can talk about that further when we get down to the. Budget itself.
Okay.
Okay, so shall we go back to, uh, do we finish with the revenues?
I think so.
Want to go to appropriations? See if we can keep this positive trend going. Okay.
Page two.
All right, Alan, Paul, Chris, any questions about appropriations?
All right, is it page?
Two or page, I think it's.
Two. All right, I, I just.
Two or five?
Yeah.
So, so I guess. To, to make life easy, and I apologize for this, if our judicial expenses either need to change it to ten K. Just so it's a wash, because you've got ten K sixty five, so remember, we just discussed on the revenue side that judicial should be ten K. So we either change to ten K sixty five or change this number to ten K, just for.
Yeah, yeah.
Cleanness.
Yep. Uh, so do you recommend, I, I think ten, six, five?
I, I would agree.
Yeah.
Just make it easy.
Yep.
Okay, so that's.
That's good, good pickup, yep.
Uh, point number two, and I guess is in the executive session, line item twelve, one oh four zero A, mayor trustee, BZA PB bar. Uh, the eleven thousand seven fifty, I'm not sure.
Yes.
If this, how you want to lead the discussion on this.
Okay, no problem, I don't think it's executive session, because this is going to be determined probably through public comment as well. So the, uh, I, I use plug numbers. And I sent out a memo today, let me review that for the public. Oh, duh, duh, anybody have that handy?
What handy?
Uh, the, the annual amounts, oh, I know, oh, Alan, it's, it's on the, uh, it's on the salary spreadsheet. Do you have that in front of you? Please feel free to read those numbers.
All right, as long as you're.
And I'm just gonna step up.
This line item. So, uh, what you're proposing is, is as follows. Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, Clark, um, Board of Zoning Appeals, no, that's two thousand, no, that's not it, sorry.
Um.
Just trying.
It's one hundred dollars per, uh, assigned board member.
Are you asking about the board, the budget wish list for the, the salaries? I have that.
Okay.
Do you, what information did you need?
Uh, just what the annual. Um, proposal is per position.
Okay, so for the mayor, it would have been three thousand two hundred fifty. Uh, for the Board of Trustees, seven hundred fifty. Um, let's see, for bar chair, it says seven fifty, but that's for the five years.
Right.
So. Yeah, so.
So the, the, uh, total for, uh, assigned board members is one hundred per year. And then, uh, seven fifty divided by five for the chair. Now, these are essentially plug numbers. Um. And I think, you know, this is something the board needs to, um, come to terms with. Uh, it's, I'm completely open for other suggestions. And also I'd like to hear, you know, public input on it as well. So I guess our choice is to leave it. Um, or if you feel strongly about making changes to those numbers. Um, we can discuss that as well, and like Paul said earlier, there's, this is a situation where. It's legislative. Um, and yet here we are trying to budget something, so we have that dilemma.
So what do you want to, just to give, you want to just take a straw vote of what we think, just to make it easy?
Yeah, absolutely. Paul?
It's, it's not something I'm wildly enthusiastic over, but I would not have a. Problem taking that proposal to the public as part of a, um, you know, as part of the budget proposal and. You know, take the public feedback on, on. What our community thinks.
Yeah, uh, Alan?
Uh, I'm not in favor of it at all. Uh, I think we currently give, uh, former trustees and current trustees the ability to tag into our health insurance, which is. A huge windfall, and I think that in itself, yeah, suffices.
Well, personally, well, obviously I support it. But I'm open to, uh, different balance of numbers, but the health insurance, Alan, I've looked into it carefully. And it doesn't beat my Cadillac plan, so it's worthless to me.
Uh, I, I agree, I think there's five other.
And I would also say I probably spend about two thousand of my own money every year.
Right, no, it's, I, I mean.
Debbie says that we, that they pay, pay a hundred percent premium.
They do, but it gives you the ability to tag on to our policy.
Right, but it's, it's not a good deal, it's not a good deal, unfortunately.
Well, I.
Although I agree, I mean, I agree, it's a, it's a Benny, that's a Benny, that's not salary.
No, no, it's five other, five other current and former trustees, uh, do see it as a huge benefit because they take advantage of it, so. It is, there is an implicit monetary benefit that people are able to get something, that's, that was my only point, it's not.
Taken, taken, no problem, uh, Chris?
I have no objections. Type in of, you know, minimal amount to, you know, kind of show some appreciation for the work that the trustees and other board members, particularly the bar and the BZA. Put into, um, and I had no idea that there was a health insurance benefit, so it would have been something nice to know.
Uh, does the town pay?
Yes, I make, uh, I earn twenty eight hundred dollars as a member of the town planning board per year.
That's nice. Wow. Uh, Tinka, how do you feel about a salary?
I'm pretty indifferent, I mean, volunteering, but I think that people. I mean, there are expenses that, that, you know, people.
Yeah, it's a tough one, I mean, on one hand, even having the discussion seems kind of weird, because we're like the only village that doesn't pay. Um, it's been, I guess. I guess if you go back, uh, twenty years ago or thirty years ago. Um, the scrutiny, um. The, the intensity of the legal and municipal requirements are much greater. The demands are much greater, I think there was a point twenty, thirty years ago where it was more of a quote unquote gentleman's job, you know, you might be the, uh. You might be the mayor, the head of the club, and a deacon at the church, oh, and on the school board. And, you know, it, it didn't have the same kind of consequences that this job carries now. Um, it's a very time consuming job. And I feel very strongly that there should be some sort of compensation, I. Um, I'd actually think it should be higher. Um, but I think that to ease into it, you know, um. Something lower, I've gotten a lot of good feedback from people. It, it's funny, actually, the, it, it's almost a generational divide, actually. Um, but anyway, all right, good straw poll, and we'll continue, and, and I think, you know, public feedback is, is going to be important, obviously. All right, so, um, thank you, Alan, for bringing that up, okay, let's move on.
Um, I guess IT equipment, just, uh, we only spent a hundred and four dollars, and to Chris's point, we're budgeting ten times that amount is, what are we missing here?
Yeah, that's a good question, Tinka, and I know that we have some expenses coming up for the booth. But I don't, uh, that would be in the donations, I don't know what this IT. Thing is, what, what is that, Debbie and, and Tinka?
I thought that it's the IT thing, I, I think it might be in the law, wrong line item, you're, uh, which, which one are you talking about?
Alan, which one?
Twenty, thirteen, twenty five, uh, four, five, eight.
Right. Treasurer, IT equipment, who even knows what that chart of account is? Um, Debbie, do you know what that is?
Well, that, that's when we got the, previously when we got the new computers for the office.
That was the two thousand from the year prior?
Yes.
And so you're assuming we're not going to get the same amount of equipment?
Probably not, no.
Okay, and you know the needs, so Alan, so it's, it's a thousand, because, um, this is probably the raw, the actual cost of purchasing the laptops last year. And then, uh, leaving a plug number in there that's less this year, based on, uh, the assumption there's going to be no more laptops. Or other computers.
I guess I'm just getting confused when you look at our IT, we've got IT support, we spent forty two thirty eight this year, which is a year where. We probably used IT a lot more because everybody was remotely and you needed things. And, you know, we spent forty two hundred dollars, we budgeted five K, prior years it's been less, obviously we're using technology more, but we're doubling it, is that?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, why did we double it, Debbie?
That's a website.
Oh, the website, gotcha, okay, good pickup, Alan, and thank you, yeah, so that's the, that's the first annual, that's the annual payment for the website is included in that.
Right.
So that's upfront fee and first year fee, is that it?
Correct, correct.
So that, so that includes a new Windsor tech support and the website.
Oh, now I remember specifically, we were banging our heads, where is a website line in the. Comptroller's chart of accounts, and we couldn't find one, I don't know if there is one, so we threw it in there, right, folks?
Mm hmm, yep.
All right, uh, ne- next one I had was fourteen twenty four oh A, which is legal. Uh, Elizabeth, where are we with regard to Nugent's billing, what's the last bill we paid?
I'm sorry, I was just doing, can you repeat the question, please?
What was the last bill we paid on Nugent, Farrick McCarthy Nugent?
Can I, can I ask Alan if you're referring to the, uh, annual agreement or, uh, the other stuff outside of that?
I'm just looking at the year to date, we're eighty K, just trying to get an idea where we are, I personally think the hundred and ten K is going to be light, in light of. You know, we've got quite a few things with one of former employee. Uh, and, uh, a couple of other things, King Douchen, for example, and, uh, you know, another one where Article seventy eight.
Right, and, and agreed, and, and the, there's also the option, as we can discuss this obviously in detail, but there's also the option of a settlement. That we were all discussing in the last executive session. But I asked, I asked Brian to, to direct me in writing. Uh, as to what that settlement number might be, we had discussed that in the, in the executive session, he's contacting that, uh. Former employee's attorney and trying to put some solid numbers on it for us, and that's a very good pickup, we, we. That's a floating number that we don't really know yet, that, that, and if we decide to pull the trigger on it, it should be in here. But I have no idea what it could be, I don't know if it's thirty, fifty, or a hundred.
Right, and I guess it's.
On that, and then, now in term, in terms of the, um, others that you raised, that, that's, when, when, I'm sure that we, um. Do you know, uh, Alan, what the annual, uh, what the expenses were last year of, above and beyond the contract?
Sorry, for Brian's firm?
Yeah, yes.
I, I think it was around eighteen K, which was. So, somewhere around there, it was eighteen to twenty, twenty two K, I believe, but I'm not positive, and those were the Madden litigation.
That was the twenty for Madden.
And then we had King Douchen where they're representing John.
Okay, can I make a suggestion? Why don't we, why don't we look deeper into the, to the billing? Um, uh, for this year, let's, let's, let's pull that file out. And, uh, then we can make a more educated guess on what to add in.
Um, Alan, um, I think it was part of the, the general fund accrual basis that, um. Elizabeth sent out to everybody yesterday. That should tell you where we are.
Sorry, but what she sent out yesterday doesn't tell us when the last bill for Nugent was paid and what the bill was. Just, just tells us.
Right, no, no, that, that's, that's a good question.
Well, I'm looking at it now, so we had two bills, uh, that were paid in, uh, March. And one was the, the regular, what I think of as the regular monthly bill, five thousand one hundred sixty six dollars, sixty seven cents, and the other was a tax. Certification or.
Right. And that was billing through what date?
It was probably in February.
It was probably through February or it was February.
Let me look.
Thank you.
So do you have a number in your head, Alan?
To be honest, no, I think it's light, because Brian has not renegotiated his fees in three years. Which I, I know, I, well, I suspect he, he's getting itchy there, and. You know, we, we've tried to work with him, or you've tried to work with him in, in order to reduce, reduce the labor intensivity of it. But I think that, that number is going to be light, and with regard to this settlement that we're talking about, I honestly think that should be within the police budget. Not, you know, there's a legal element.
Oh, yeah, right, no, no, that, 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 yes, I, I agree with that.
Settlement should be a line item in the police budget that, you know. It, it, you know, it's saddling the chief with an expense he doesn't necessarily have control over, but I think it's the appropriate place.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't argue that, in, in, in terms of, uh, Brian and renegotiation. He's fully aware that we're in the budget process and has not requested an increase. Um. And so. We didn't put one in. That doesn't mean he won't come back, but at this, at this point in time, he has not requested one, and this would be the time to do it.
Right, so I, I mean, I, my gut is, and, you know, let, let's see where this eighty K is, but. My gut is, we're going to have to increase this number by ten percent. Because I, I know the King Douchen, we've spent a lot more money than any of us envisioned, and it doesn't seem like that's disappearing.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind doing that, because, yeah, I, I mean, if we don't spend it, great, but I wouldn't mind, uh, raising that number.
Um, there was some feedback on this too, I mean, he's the one that can best tell us how much.
Right.
These fees are going to add up to.
Right, so, uh, let's see, who has his number? We have, we have Brian's cell phone number, let's get him. On the line. Uh, or should we do that during, we should do that during the exec sesh?
Yes.
Let's do that during executive session and then come back to this, because, yeah, uh, as Chris and Alan are both making good points here. Um, so let's come back to that, is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Those bills were for February.
For February, so we got March, April, May, so we got three more months, so we got eighteen, eighteen K more before. Any overages.
Mm hmm.
So that takes us to a hundred. So that takes us to a hundred, so we're, we're basically going to be. At that number. Already, A, and then we've got two other legal. Uh, firms that represent us, which will probably nudge us over, so we're, we're going to be hitting that number high, so. I think personally, I think the number is a bit light, that's all I'm saying.
Or rather than uh, going to get full details from Brian, we could bump it up thirty. And just live with that. If you think that's a reasonable assumption. I'm open to ideas.
My, my gut is we take it from one ten to one twenty. I'm not sure I, yeah.
Would go to the one thirty.
I would go to one thirty because I would assume that who, who's ever uh, on the board will be trying to. Minimize our legal expenses and, you know. If we can resolve things, we'll resolve.
Only that were possible. Yeah, no, I, I hear you. Um, I don't mean to be sarcastic, but it's always tough. Uh, yeah, okay, so let's go to one twenty. Uh, without objection from anyone else, and we'll just move forward.
Yeah, as long as I, I mean, I think an informed assumption is better than an uninformed assumption, and just we can ask the person who's going to charge us. As long as we do that before. We have a vote on the final budget.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's fair. So let's put the one twenty in for now, and then we'll get a, a tighter number from Brian. Everyone good with that? Okay, next.
All right, next.
Sorry, hate to go backwards. But on a, where is it? Um, line item one, three, two, five, four, three, A.
Say it again, please.
Treasure assistant.
Clerical assistant, yes.
So. Uh, my sense is based on, you know, the conversations we've had and what we have to do vis a vis the controller. We have to um, plan for that, and we may want to discuss that, you know, in um. Uh, in more detail in executive session, but I, I think we, we need to plan for. Uh, at least, at least consider planning for um. You know, some additional expense in that area.
That's a good idea. Yep.
So how much are you proposing, Paul? I mean, twelve forty five, I assume is the retainer we're paying Daddy. Is that, is that where that number is coming from?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that number seems.
Well, I think, you know, I, I, I hate to come up with a number now, but I, I, I think maybe we should, we should, you know. Talk to Elizabeth and Debbie and review what the controller wants, and you know, maybe it's. Um, you know, one day a week, part time. Maybe it's something more, or it depends.
Well, i- if I could comment on that, um. I, I felt a couple of months ago, um, I asked that, uh, I spoke with Denise. And with Elizabeth. And I recommended that Denise do the bank recs. And she agreed to do it. And I think she's capable of doing it. And it was a matter of um, closing out a certain month and then, and then doing that. I don't know where that project stands right now. But um, in that case, uh, we wouldn't have to incur a new cost, which is why there's nothing in there. That's, but that's my assumption, so, you know.
Fair enough.
And I said, that's what you're referring to, right? You're referring to the, the comptroller's request that we have someone do bank recs, et cetera, right?
If I can sign in. I, I, I actually think that there, you, we absolutely need a part timer working with me. I think Desiree was working part time with Debbie. Until COVID struck, um, there is a lot here to do, and um, I. I would, if, if, if I had to say in this, I would say, please bring in a part timer to help.
Okay, so what we'll do then, thank you for that. What we'll do is we'll discuss that in executive session. Um, or if you guys prefer, you could put in like, say. Thirty five, forty grand. As a guestimate. Um.
I personally think we need to discuss this in executive session.
Okay.
Agree with that.
So you're not, you don't favor a plug number. Okay, let's.
Um, I, I, I think, I think we need to have um, a meeting of minds.
Yeah, fair enough.
An air, let me rephrase it. Not necessarily a meeting of minds, an airing of different issues, and then, then from there, we can come up with some kind of number, but. I, I'd favor doing it that way.
No problem.
Um, my, you know, going back down, unless Paul wants to jump up again, is. The fourteen forty one forty one A, which is engineering. Uh, we, we've had a problem with this all year long because we haven't adjusted uh. Per our board resolution, so we're way over budget there. Um, and. I think we're going to be way over.
What are you talking about?
Engineering can, like. That number, we're at forty nine thousand, we budgeted twenty five thousand, so we've violated every rule. Under the sun with regard to that. We were meant, meant to make some adjustments and reverse accrue.
Are you referring to the I and I?
It, this, this is a slew of whole, whole different things.
Right, well, no, I just want to make sure we're on the same page because we finished year three. And um. So, you know, if you're referring to the commitment to the DEC, is that what you're referring to?
No, not, not at all.
Okay, if you don't mind explaining a little bit.
Yeah, sorry, so line item fourteen forty one four one A is all non-I and I related engineering expenses.
Okay, so what is, what is, what is it?
So the engineering I and I expenses go in the, the category where we had a hundred and twenty K.
Right.
In the budget, so that's where the engineering went in there. This number would be a water control plan. Where we engaged uh, Weston and Sampson to do um. Hey, you know, work with us and doing specs and everything for the water control plant.
Right, so I've got, I, I can comment, I think, we, we, uh. You know, the, the responses that we hired them to, to write for us, right? That was one and three, I think, questions one and three. And um, they presented to us in a meeting uh, last week. Maybe it was even this week. Um, a solution. Um, they presented five different ideas, different solutions, and they chose what they felt was the. Uh, best value, the cheapest, and the best solution. Which involves putting partitions. In the uh, the pans. Uh, because the water flow, need to slow down the water flow and then capture the chemicals. Um, that the DEC is, is asking us to adjust.
Uh, sorry, we're, we're talking water or sewer right now?
Water.
So Department of Health then?
Yes. Uh.
The DEC, that's.
Yeah, sorry, so uh. We are also in the process of answering the other questions. John and, and Jeff are working on that, however. Um, I believe this is, now, I may be wrong, but I think this is where we put that cost. And, and I told uh, Joe that we had to have board approval. So at the next meeting, what I intend to do is uh, show you his proposal and. Uh, approve what he's recommending, and I believe that's the plug number for that.
Right, so, so just so we're clear, this isn't a plug number, this is what we spent year to date.
Uh, can, can.
I'm talking about the, the budget moving forward.
Right, can, can Debbie chime, chime in a little?
Yeah, please.
Fourteen forty one four one.
Yeah.
The forty nine thousand might be items that should have been allocated to the I and I category. We have to go, go into QuickBooks and see what the breakdown is for those.
Right, so, so Debbie, the, the answer is they're not. They're to do with funds that should I come out of the contingency. We made board authorizations in September of October last year, and they weren't, adjustments weren't paid. So it's not to do.
What, what was the resolution, Alan? Please share.
These were resolutions with regard to the water control plant and a couple of other, other, other issues with regard to engineering expenses. So, we, we don't need to belabor the discussion on here. The, the question is, I think the twenty five K. Is light. Given uh, how much we're relying on our engineer. And I, my question is, if we spent fifty K this year. What makes any of us think that we're not going to spend fifty K next year?
Can I ask a question about this? Um, because I'm looking at QuickBooks and I only show nineteen thousand seven forty seven as paid to date on that line.
Then why is it showing forty nine one three three?
I don't know.
So I assume that Debbie and you guys are looking at that? Forty nine verse nineteen?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I think we're getting a little bit into weeds. My, I guess my.
But I, I, I mean, with all due respect, I'm trying, I think you kind of brought it. I'm trying to figure out exactly what you're referring to. When you're saying we have resolutions that we didn't follow up on, that's.
No, no, we had resolutions where we approved the, the dollar expense on engineering. That was all done. What we also had is that we had a resolution is we didn't have enough money in the line item. Because you can't exceed your line item amount.
Right, so we transferred money?
And it should have been transferred out of our contingency funds, and it was.
Saying that it was not transferred out?
Correct, so the issue, the issue here is. The fact of the matter is, we spent ballpark fifty K on engineering. Why are we assuming only twenty five K next year? I personally think that's light. And that, that's my only point in this, and I'm sorry.
No, no, I, i- i- if, if this, yes, I would have the same question as you do. Um, I'd like to find out what, whether it's forty nine or whether it's nineteen. And we should pause while we get that information. I'll be back in one second.
Yeah. So we should also be looking there and make sure that there isn't, um, you know, stuff there that. Isn't properly charged to the water department. So for example, the, you know, the water control panel should not be in there at all. It should be over in the water budget.
Exactly. And I believe it came out of the water contingency.
On this page, there's a breakdown. Right, total. Right, so I think it's just a typo. On here. Right? It doesn't make sense, right?
Oh, mine, yes. Um. I think it might just be a typo, guys. And that the real number is for that line item, Alan. Which you have, right? You have that general fund. It's nineteen, nineteen seven forty seven point oh six.
Well, no, no, I'm looking at line item fourteen forty one four one A.
Right.
It's a quick, it's a quick book number. Can't be a typo because it's, it's just down in louder from QuickBooks.
Well, on the budget is, the, the, on the budget that we're looking at, that's an Excel spreadsheet.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm looking at the year, year to date, it's a expense.
Yeah.
Which is forty nine thousand one thirty three.
Yeah, but what's the date of your report? Because I, are you looking at? This thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Year, year to date, twenty twenty through twenty twenty one through March tenth.
Right, so this, this sheet that we're all looking at, I think that's a typo, that's an Excel spreadsheet. It doesn't come from QuickBooks.
Oh, yeah, this is all done on a separate, outside the system. We don't have a budget, we're not using the budget module, and we haven't for years.
So it, that number actually, Alan, for, on the spreadsheet that we're all looking at. It should read. Um. Nineteen, what is it, nineteen, okay, nineteen seven forty seven. Is the actual.
Oh, actual then should be not in there, it should be where the forty nine is.
Yeah, the actual is nineteen seven forty seven, not forty nine one thirty three.
Right, so you just put nine, right, there you go. Now that's the right, that's the right column.
Yep.
It's up there.
Yep. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. All right, so, um, that's actual.
Wait, wait, I'm looking at the QuickBooks report, June first, twenty twenty through March seventeenth, twenty twenty one. And it's showing that we spent forty nine thousand one thirty three point one five, so I don't remotely agree. With this, I'm just looking.
Doesn't make sense, yeah.
It do, it doesn't reconcile, and I just think, I, I.
Well, let's, let's spend the time now to figure this out.
Yeah, I don't think we need to get a, an answer to resolve it, but I don't think it should belabor the point. I'm just saying. I, I believe the fifty K is correct, it's been reported for the last four months there, so I don't believe. It's uh, just an incorrect entry. I, my only point is, I think the number is light. And I think we should discuss increasing it, given the scope of work and how much we rely on our engineer. That's the extent of my conversation.
Yeah, no, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. Um. So Elizabeth and uh, Tinka, do you want to?
I'm just.
I- i- is Alan, it's, if Alan's correct, it's been reported that way for four months or whatever.
But here's my question, is the, is this what you're referring to from the QuickBooks?
No, I, I'm referring to our monthly statements we send out to the whole village in the village package. With all, all the board resolutions and our financials.
Right, right.
That's what I'm referring to.
Okay, um. I, I'm, I'm willing to give it another few minutes if we can get an explanation.
I mean, I, personally, I think you should come back to this because I don't think it's going to be something that's going to be able to be answered in short order, but that's, that's me.
All right, so, uh, all right, now, so i- if, let's just do a little final prep before we move on. So if it's fifty. Um, uh, you would be wanting to raise this to fifty five or something, or, or sixty, I would imagine.
Uh, I, I, i- i- if it's fifty. I, I think we have to recognize that, you know, either we reduce our contingency. Or we better reflect what we're spending on our engineering. And my preference would be to better reflect so we have greater transparency.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not arguing with that. Okay, so we'll come back to that. And we know where we'd go if, uh. If, if it's fifty, we know where we'd go, so we'll come back to that. Okay, so uh, thank you. Let's move on to the next.
I, I guess on the insurance, and I'm not sure how we've ever done it, I, I think Paul and Tinka answered the question. They divided the, the increase on our insurance, but we've, we've also got the issue that our deductible has been increased and.
Yeah, I think that was in the water. Was the comment.
Sorry, we, what we've done is we've taken. The majority in the general, some in the water. The question is, if the deductible has gone from twenty five hundred to ten K. Whether or not we should be adjusting for that, or better question, and this probably directed Debbie is, how in the past? Did we treat that, and what should we do going forward?
Well, we just got a general estimate of how much it would increase from Marshall and Sterling, and that's what we put into the budget.
So you ignored the deductible factor, how much we have to pay out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then, then, then that's done and dusted, that one.
Because our assumption is we will have no claims.
That's right.
So, so I guess.
They say about that subject.
So, to, to Paul's point. Do we take the seventy five hundred dollar increase in the deductible? And we increase our contingency by that amount, assuming we're going to have one claim per year? Which seems, you know, not an unreasonable approach.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. Um. Is that what you did? Is that what you did, Alan, last year, or at the last increase, something over the last five years? Alan, oh, he's gone. Um. Paul, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I, I mean, I, I said that kind of, I said that kind of flippantly, but I, I think.
Yeah, thanks.
Historically, historically, that is the assumption, and if we have, you know, claims are taken care of, out of, um, you know, out of contingencies.
I, I think it's prudent.
Right.
Yeah, I really do. And so what would that adjustment be? You said it's seventy-five hundred?
Uh, so you could, you.
Deductible. Reduction.
I was coming out a little bit on the other side of the argument, frankly, saying that you would leave it at, leave it at ninety. And really, you know, if there's a claim, it comes out of, it comes out of contingencies and you, you leave your contingency. But I don't have a problem bumping it up to a hundred either and, and assuming that that's, you know.
Well, I mean, if, if, if it's six of one half dozen the other and it's likely to come at a contingency, let's not raise the tax. I mean, I would fall on that side.
Yeah, I guess.
Just leave it.
My, my, my gut is, we keep the ninety because that, that's what our premium is and everybody, you know, gets back to transparency. People can see that we're paying twenty-five K more, uh, on insurance and the cost of suing the village, which is good. Uh, the contingency to me is when we have to pay the deductible, so my, that, that's how I'd look at it.
Okay, all right, good. No, I, I, Chris, do you have any comments on that or Tinka?
No, I'm, I'm fine. I, I, I think it makes sense what Alan's saying.
Yeah, it's sound. What, it, I think it makes sense. Yes, we brought it up and we were, and we decided to, to keep it. So, all right, next.
Uh, just, uh, you know, I don't know if anyone saw it, everyone saw it, but I sent a note around this morning because I, I think my recollection was, and, and Debbie may be able to weigh in on this, is that you, we need to keep our categories in here, even if we're assigning zero to it until they roll off the oldest year. So, um, Lakes Management, uh, which appeared right below this section, I think, should go back in there.
Yes, okay.
And we can talk now or later or whenever we want about Lakes Management.
Okay, so when we're, okay, so you're talking about an accounting rule and how, how often would you leave it? I mean, how, how long would you leave it?
I, I think it's supposed to stay in until we, um, until there's no applicable.
As, as a zero.
Right, so it would stand for another two years because.
So my idea I had off the cuff the other day of getting rid of all these zero lines because they were annoying is probably not the appropriate thing to do and we didn't do it. Okay, that's good to know. Is there any other, Paul, off the top of your head, is, are there any other things that we transferred over that should be zeroed? For two years? That you're aware of?
There was one other and I can't remember what it was, uh, off the top of my head.
Because we could correct that.
The grant writer line should come out because that's zero all across the board.
There, that's when it comes out.
Yeah, that's, that's what, where the things I was referring to, like tax refunds prior years. Okay, all right, good. Thank you, Debbie and Paul. All right, so we'll, we'll take out, uh, everything that's been zeroed for across the board and we'll leave items in at a zero for two years. And that would include, uh, moving money for the lake management from the general fund. Is that what you're referring to, Paul?
Right.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, that's a good pickup. Thank you. I didn't see that email. When did you send that out?
Um, about an hour before the meeting.
Oh.
Right. And there are some, I think there's some questions about moving that over to Lakes Management, but we can discuss that in the contents.
You mean the, the two lakes?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, sure. You, you remember what I said was the rationale, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Are we discussing it now or are we going to wait till we get there?
Uh, let's just wait till we get there. We're almost there, aren't we?
Um.
Oh, okay, let's, let's continue on.
To answer your question, I, I guess the answer is actually in the, in, uh, Tink is a cover memo. Moving some stuff that moved over from the sewer budget. And item eight of our cover letter.
Okay, thank you. That was the one that you couldn't remember?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Tinka, did you hear that?
That we need to move it back?
We want to put it in as a zero. And it's going to stay that way for two years.
Uh, yeah.
In other words, we can't delete, just delete the line item, the, the, uh,
Right.
Numbered line item.
Yeah.
And those two circumstances, one would be for the, uh.
The Lakes Management.
Yes, the thirty, and then the other one was, Paul, what number was it on the? Legend?
Eight, one, three, oh, five, zero, A.
So we'll, we'll keep.
Eight, one, three, oh, five, zero, eight.
And the nineteen eighty-nine point four, right?
You asking Paul?
Oh, I don't, um, it, it's not on my sheet anymore, so I don't. I don't know, whatever, uh.
Okay, so, all right, so we'll make those adjustments. Um, and let's move on.
So all of those items, we just have to keep it at zero, right?
Yeah. Um, I, I, I'm not sure, this is probably directed executive session with regard to police personnel services. Uh, that number, what's implicit and everything, so my guess is we need to, given that's, uh, staffing, embedded salary raises and everything, my guess is that's a discussion for executive session. This is what, item thirty-one.
Yeah, and, and also we can include the, uh, contract negotiations as well.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
That's page two of five. Uh, I think my questions are, I've raised issues I had.
Mm-hmm, Paul?
I'm, I'm done there.
Chris?
I'm done.
Okay, let's go to page three of five, please.
So three of five, um, the top line item, um, I, I guess I have a question, which is five oh, one oh, one oh, A.
Uh-huh.
Which I believe is salaries of, uh, some employees, correct?
It's one quarter of Jeff's salary. Plus, um, payment for unused sick days.
Payment for unused sick days, okay.
Thank you.
So, um, we're, we're kind of, let's just zip down to street maintenance equipment. Uh, not that one, sorry, the one below, it's, uh, street maintenance contractual, so five, one, one, oh, four, oh, eight.
Right, I'm there.
We've spent fifty-five K this year.
Correct.
We had budgeted a hundred and seventy-five.
Correct.
So, uh, question is, is Jeff going to pave a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of roads in the next?
Okay, so good question. Um, my last conversation with Jeff was specifically about this and it was last week. And he, uh, is collecting information, uh, from the paving company. And they're, they're coming in, uh, to look at the roads and give them an accurate, uh, per mile cost. And then based on that, uh, we were going to, uh, look at whether it would be worth paving this year. My, my personal view is, uh, we don't need to do any more paving this year and we can put it into June, but it really is going to depend on, um, what the numbers come in at. That's my preference though, is to, is, I, I, I would recommend we don't do any additional paving this year.
So I, 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 I'll preface it this way, I, I don't have a strong opinion. Uh, the government bid is seventy-two dollars per ton, which doesn't seem that crazy, uh, basis.
When did you get that? Was that from Jeff?
Yeah, that, that's the government bid that comes out. I think it was.
Right, right, no, that's, that, right, that, that's for material.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right, yeah, that's fine. No, we're talking about the labor.
Right, so, sorry, so let, let me just finish. My, my only point is, is, you know, we've done a third of what we budgeted. Uh, and basically we're saying the roads are no worse off, which I, I don't have, obviously, I don't, I don't have boots on the ground, so I have absolutely zero opinion and not remotely qualified to comment on that. But are we comfortable saying that Jeff's going to do no paving the next two months of this year? And are we comfortable just saying we're only going to do a hundred and seventy K? Which, you know, if we use the argument we used to about the life cycle, we would need, want to do two and a half miles a year, which may or may not be applicable because the weather might not be as heavy, we're not using as much salt, so the deterioration on the roads is not that as great. I mean.
Actually, to be honest, uh, we, we actually did have to, to double up on salt. So there was quite a, quite a, quite a lot of salt went down this year. Um, but I, I, I agree with you. At this point in time, the idea of doing a certain amount of miles for, per year, isn't as relative as it was because at this point we're weighing things like West Lake Road, which would require, you know, the full boat where you would shave off, uh, parts of the existing asphalt. It would be, I guess I would classify it as the most expensive. So we're down to a, a point of where we really want to apply the fund. As far as I'm concerned, well, I, it, it is a fact, at this point in time, there are no paving plans. Um, Jeff has not, uh, he, he recommended, he, he brought up the idea of doing, uh, Tuxedo Road. Um, and I, I don't think that's necessary. And if it were, I'd question the quality of what we're doing because the life cycle of that is.
Yeah, but that was done relatively recently, wasn't it?
Yeah, I know, that's my point. Yeah, exactly. So, um, I, I would hope to put the kibosh on that. Um, and then the balance, if, if it's available, um, it, you know, I, I think we could, we'd be better off picking it up in June. That, that's how I approached this. That's how I made these assumptions.
So, so to, to kind of dumb this down, we're basically saying we might spend ten, ten or fifteen K more this year, but we're going to be basically a hundred K under budget on paving.
Uh, that's correct.
We're not, we're not going to increase next year's paving budget. Um, and I guess my only question is, the, on our work has had, had negative effects on our roads, given the amount of heavy trucks and everything, and are there areas of remediation that we should get Jeff to focus on for the balance of this year where they did do some work?
That, that's, that's a good question. Um, we're fortunate that there hasn't been. The only thing that has come up and may come up again, and that's why I agree with your ten to fifteen thousand dollars, is we, you know, as we're doing the leak, uh, remediation, um, we're, we've had to dig up a couple of roads. We had to dig up something in the East Village. I'm not sure it's the East Village, near Steve's Pizza. And we had to dig up the road between, uh, the Hanson, Chris Hanson and Shapiro, the old DM House. And so those were patchworks, but, um, there's no noticeable wear and tear on the roads, but that, that's not taking into account Pond Three. The Pond Three Bridge, which is a separate issue. So I would agree with you, maybe ten, ten, twenty more, but we should have a, we should have a chunk left over, yeah.
So I, I think what we can, it seems like we're agreeing is, and for this fiscal year's budget, we freed up a hundred K by not having to spend money paving. But what we're saying is, we're just going to hold it at a hundred, you know, we're going to have a nominal decrease for the following fiscal year. Is that, is that?
I, I think so.
Fair synopsis?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a very fair synopsis.
Okay. Nobody else has any questions on that one?
Just, okay, so if we're going to keep it a hundred and seventy K from June until the following May, is there a tentative plan of what would be paved in that timeframe?
Uh, no, he has not submitted a plan and we have not asked for a plan. We did a plan, uh, actually, uh, a couple of years ago, um, where we picked out the, the critical roads. And correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, I think we took care of most of those.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we basically did primary, secondary and tertiary.
Right.
And the tertiary roads, and you know, depending if you're happy, they went the gravel route and that created some problems because people were annoyed about noise and debris and all those things. So there were some ancillary issues that had to be dealt with.
We went back and reswept.
Yeah. So, uh, but you know, I think the, the primary arteries were taken care of, yes.
Which leaves a big project on West Lake Road. Coming up.
Correct.
But, uh, Chris, I think that, uh, I, you know, Jeff, this is almost exactly what Jeff said, Jeff asked for on his budget, if that's your question. Well, I took it down ten.
Okay, so who, if he asked for one seventy, why?
He asked for one eighty. I took it down ten.
But, yeah, so what, what, what did he plan on spending that money on? That's my question.
No, I, I understand. And, uh, he didn't give us a, a breakdown in detail. Um, I, you'd have to ask, but I think he just, um, used, wanted to increase his budget by five because it was a budget year. And, uh, I took it down by, by ten.
Right. I just think that's a big number for no actual designated roads to be paved. We, it's, it's a year out. We should, the roads aren't going to change that much. We should know what that's going for.
Right, but I guess the bigger question, Chris, is what, why did he only spend a third of his budget? This, this fiscal year?
It looks like all across the board here, um, we've been coming in lower than we budgeted.
Right, so if nobody asked that question last year, or if they did, what was his answer? What was the roads he was going to pave? That led to not spending a hundred and seventy-five K? And what are the roads that he's going to pave next year? I think that's a fair question. I, it's hard for us to vote on a almost two hundred thousand dollar number without knowing what it's supposed to go to.
Right, so I'll, I'll answer part of the question. The one fifty-one he spent in nineteen twenty, he actually spent an additional seventy-five or eighty-five K where we had it as a residual on a bond issuance. So we, he budgeted one seventy-five. We took one fifty out of his budget and we used the residuals of a bond proceeds to finish the paving. So we went over the number, our total dollar spend in nineteen twenty was greater than what he'd asked for. This year, I really can't answer what, why he hasn't chosen to pave or, you know, maybe in his opinion, the roads aren't as bad as he thought. Uh, I, you know, I think we need to, it, it feels like we needed a deeper dive on this to get comfort on whether a number should be fifty or a hundred and seventy, to be honest.
Right, and I, I would imagine when he gets the per mile price, he'll divide that into one seventy and say, I'm going to pave X number of miles.
I, I mean, on an ongoing basis, Jeff does come to the board and report when he's asked to, you know, what his plan is for paving by road. And he does have a, a, um, you know, a program annually. He, he'd have developed that yet for this year.
And we, we've been voting on all of his proposals. Rather than, yeah.
Sorry.
Rather than approving a number and letting him decide which roads, the practice by this board has been to have him come to us each time he wants to pave a road and then he'll give us an estimate. So we work up against a higher number. That's the way it's been done in practice.
I agree, and I guess my only caveat is, when he, he's, we force him to come to the board when he uses outside vendor to come in and, and re, redo the roads, his patching and, uh, hudge, pudge paving potholes and stuff like that where he can do it with his DPW staff, he's, he's got the latitude there to use his best judgment. But, you know, and that's where, as far as I'm concerned, that's where the fifty-five K. But, you know, and that's where, as far as I'm concerned, that's where the fifty-five K is being spent on potholes and minor patchworks. We've had no, you know, the last nine months, I know we haven't voted on any external paving. I think it's Peckham who comes in and does our paving for us. We haven't done that.
Yep, they, absolutely right.
So I guess, I guess what we're saying is, we need a, a, a deeper, deeper dive in justification. Is that what we're saying?
I'd like to hear his plan.
Okay, so can we, John, can you ask him if he's available to present a plan, if he has one? At least we'll know if he has one or not.
And, and the other thing that might be helpful is at the public hearing, if we hear comments from the public about the status of the, that may help.
Yeah. So.
I will notify Jeff of this. And once again, he is getting some prices on per mile and this way we can extrapolate what might be needed.
Right. Yeah, that was the last conversation I had. But ask him if he has a, a plan, at least what road is going to be done first, that kind of thing. And if it just in his mind justified the one eighty ask. And, you know, I think that's what Chris is looking for. In other words, why shouldn't we just put in a hundred? If he feels that he's got justification to do a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth, let us know. Okay, excellent. Good conversation. Let's move on.
I mean, I think we're, with regard to line item seventy-one forty forty A, which is the Weewaw Beach Club, can we just ask on that right now? Because we're kind of doing a,
I mean, well, actually, what we, what we decided to do, Alan, was eliminate this five. And because we're not going, we have no plans to spend five thousand on the Weewaw Beach Club at this point in time. And we're only, but we, we do have a proposal from them for a thousand dollars for the lease. So we put that in on the, on the other side, on the revenue side. Okay. I would, I would just say eliminate that.
I have not seen anybody run. I'm trying to get people to run for, you know, against Mac as mayor and against them.
Oh, that's great.
You'll mute yourselves.
That's hilarious. All right. So, moving on.
A quick question, if you can, because I, I never remember where it is. Where, where is salt in this or Debbie or Elizabeth?
You have to ask Governor Como that.
Where is salt in this hodgepodge of numbers?
Snow removal contribution, isn't it? Fifty-one forty-two forty A? Snow removal contractual?
Debbie, where do we put salt purchases?
That, that is it. All right.
Okay, we're good?
Pretty sure that's it.
All right. So even, even with the excessive use this year, we were at, we were at, you know, close to budget. So we could change that.
Right.
And, and, and no, and that was based on, on an educated guess because we had, we had surplus.
Right. Correct.
So we came out good on that one.
I, I, I might take umbrage to Paul's categorization of excessive use. How about judicious use of salt in order to make the road safe for the residents?
Necessary, appropriate use.
Okay.
All right. Moving on.
Oh, wait, Debbie has a, yeah. Um, the budget number up above for five-one-three-zero-two-zero machinery equipment. Um, those are the payments that are, that we make on the three DPW trucks. And the category, actually, I forgot to add in the interest, so it should be a total of fifty-four eight-eight-one.
So this is fifty-one thirty-two O A, right?
Right.
So instead of forty-eight four-five-one, you want it to be what?
Five-four-eight-eight-one.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just, just so we're clear, that, that includes the new, the new plow and salt dispenser, correct? It includes the payments there.
And the police, the, the police budget has the other.
Right. And then I guess the question is, given the truck that Hocky used where the engine's fallen out, has Jeff presented you with any numbers with regard to replacement vehicle with regard to that?
Okay, so serendipity. You know, when we went to the replacement truck, it looked like we were going to have to do a buyout of some sort on the balance. But lo and behold, the oldest truck broke down, as you just mentioned, and the engine so forth. It's determined that we should get a replacement truck. And that will primarily take care of the balance of the lease that we had already taken out in, in the last fiscal year. So that, that's good because we would have otherwise had to come up with another fifty. And the issue now is a one ton versus a pickup. And unfortunately, long story short, he has not given us any information about a truck yet. I'm disappointed in that. I'd like to get this thing resolved. But he has not given us a spec.
Okay, so I, I guess I just have two comments and they're probably throwaway comments. One is, I know that the big truck, the IH or whatever we've got, is a seven-year lease. And the smaller trucks that we get, we usually do a four to five-year lease through, through, and we don't, you know.
Yeah, no, understood. I think,
Do we need to bump this number is my question, up to sixty K just to give us a comfort factor? Or not?
Um, you know, that's, I, I don't, I don't know really the answer to that question, to be honest.
I don't think any of us do because you, we don't have the numbers from Jeff. But I, I guess the question is, if we're asking him about paving the roads, maybe we could do, get him to do a quick dive on this to give us some answers on that too.
Do you know off the top of your head what the balance on the lease was?
For which?
For the, the replacement truck left a balance on the lease. And do we know what that number was? I think it was fifty? Does anyone recall that? I don't have that.
I, I think, I think it, I, I go forty. I think you're comfortable there. And I think the new truck we bought a couple of years ago was, you know, fifty to fifty-five K. So there's a small delta, but it's over four to five years. So it could be a wash. I just think,
Yeah, that's what, that's what we were, that's what I was hoping for.
Yeah.
So do you want to just leave it or do you want to?
Uh, I mean, if we can get Jeff to give us some granularity on his number, we know the other variables. But, you know, my gut would be ta, take it to fifty-seven K, the three K is going to cover additional le, financing payments if we need it. And then, then we're done and dusted with this.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't think we would need additional payments, but I have no problem doing that. The, the, this comes from the bid list now.
Right.
Not, it's not a custom truck. So it should, it'll, it'll be a solid number. I just haven't gotten the number from him yet.
Yeah.
But if you want to, if you want to raise it up, you have, seem to have some hunch, which,
To be honest, I, my, my confidence interval is not that high on this. I just, my gut tells me it's going to be on the hi, higher side than the lower side. That, that's it, just given it's a compressed payment schedule.
And so you, what do you want to bump it up to?
I, I'm just suggesting we take it from fifty-four eight-eight-one up to fifty-seven K and that'll co, cover incremental lease A financing.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Better safe than sorry. All right. So we're going to raise that up to fifty-eight-five, you said, or fifty-seven-five? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Debbie had given us fifty-four eight-eight-one, so I'm suggesting we take it to fifty-seven thousand.
Fifty-seven.
And then we just put on the footnotes, includes two new trucks and then Solomon plans on two vehicles. Just do that modifier all the way on the left-hand side.
Okay, anyone, Paul, do you have any comments on that?
Nope.
Chris?
Good, makes sense.
Tinka? Okay, great. Let's move on.
So yet again, and, and this is probably Debbie, snow removal equipment. We didn't spend anything this year. We spent, and we're budgeting five K. Is that snow plow blades, Debbie?
Yeah, blades and items related to the, the equipment on the plows and the trucks.
I mean, I, I would honestly drop that number by, down to three K, bring it to our historical average. And then you just save and you better reflect the truck vehicle and how often we replaced the blades.
Well, I, you know, I, to be honest, I'd hesitate to do that only because we haven't done, we haven't been able to analyze the inventory. And, you know, we, for example, there are two plows that are obsolete, but that have been sitting on the yard and we, we never did anything with it, like for example, sell them or, or take them out of surplus. So there's, there's work to be done in that area. And to cover ourselves, I'd rather have the five. But again, it's just a guess and it, and it's going to depend on the status of the inventory and, and the status of the equipment itself. As to how many new blades we might need, or maybe we can take a blade off another truck, you know, that kind of stuff.
Did Jeff give you that number?
Yes.
Yes, this is from his budget. But what do you, what do you think, Alan?
I guess we can assume that he, he has been able to have everything work without doing any replacement. But that, that, that's a dangerous assumption because we know what happens. We have a truck that all of a sudden the engine falls out. So,
Right, right.
May, maybe that speaks for itself. So, but I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
All right. Okay. Anybody else? Paul?
No, I'm good with that.
So the garage contract, did, were we locked in or did they have escalator clauses? I've forgotten.
Oh, which, which agreement?
This is, you know, our garbage contractual eighty-one six oh four oh A. I know we went out to bid. We had a, a one-off increase, but I didn't know there was an escalator clause in that. Does, do you remember, Debbie?
I don't think so. I think it's the same price for three years.
Yeah. So it was just a locked-in price for three years? Paul, you were, didn't you work on it with Alan or was it Alan?
My rec is consistent with Debbie's. I think it's,
Yeah. So in other words, we should go back to fifty, i- is it fifty-three six-one-six per year?
No, no, you have the right number there.
You have, you have the right number. Yeah, it's thirteen, thirteen thousand a month or thirteen thousand something a month.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Good.
So street cleaning personnel services. So this is staffing, right, Debbie?
Yes.
So I guess my issue is Coco retired. We brought Dominic in. Are we assuming that we've hiring more people? Or we're giving people huge raises because we spent three hundred and nine thousand. We're going to be very light this year. Why are we budgeting more for next year?
Well, we have the DPW contract and going back retroactively.
Yes.
Right, but that doesn't, I, I mean, how many more payrolls through, this is, I'm looking at a thing through March tenth, right? So we got April, May.
Actually, you have it, you have a document there that's current, actually. It's the expense report that you got. I think that's directly from QuickBooks. And that shows you payrolls. We just did one payroll and that's accounted for. So it, it's accurate up through yesterday. And so you might find a better number there in terms of.
Right. I, I'm just saying this number is very low on the year-to-date. My, my concern is, I, I accept that we've got, a, given the DPW contract, we're going to have to do back, back wages to when the contract expired. But I think our number is way too high on the expense side.
Okay, just to be on the same page, what line item, please?
Sorry, eighty-one seven-zero-one-zero A, street cleaning personnel services.
Got you. Oh. Eighty-one seventy, a forty-eight?
Yeah. Sorry, somebody's got it right in front of you.
Gotcha. Okay, I see it's yellow highlighted. Okay.
You see the number three oh nine?
Yep, I got you. Thank you.
Eighty-eight percent through the year and, you know, that number, you know, it's going to go up a little bit, but it's not going to go up by seventy-five K.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So do we know what, how we got the four-two-four?
See, this, this is the most accurate number. So we're eighty-four percent, I think.
Three hundred sixty-three thousand.
Yeah, yeah, three hundred, uh, fifty, three fifty-three thousand is where we are now currently.
Mm-hmm. And why do we have, what's the justification for the four-two-four zero-five-eight? What, what, what goes into that increase?
It was one percent salary increase plus some for retro.
Mm-hmm. Plus the, the, was it, is this also the contract?
That was figuring just one percent for the contract.
All right. But Debbie, just correct me if I'm looking at this wrong. If you take the three fifty-three and think I said we're eighty-eight percent of the way through the year.
Eighty.
Eighty-four.
Eighty, eighty-four. We're coming up with a four hundred thousand dollar, dollar spend there. And what we're doing is we're showing four twenty-four, four twenty-five. So we've got retroactive pay, but we've also got a significantly cheaper, less experienced employee who's on the payroll who replaced Coco. So the, the number seems,
Yeah, you're wondering how to reconcile that number. Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what, how do we, how do we get that?
Well, if you look at last year's actual, it was four hundred and fourteen thousand. So it's only going up, you know, less than ten thousand.
Right. But my argument is Dominic versus Coco.
Right, but the,
There's nobody else that's come on, right?
There's not a big hourly rate between the two guys.
Oh, well, there's your answer. So it's not as much of a delta as you thought.
Yeah.
It's not.
Plus you've got overtime.
John is also agreeing. So the price differential, Alan, even though Dominic is less, it's not, I don't think of this, the spread is as wide as you thought. Can we, can we determine that, John and/or Debbie?
Sure. We can, first we can start by looking at the DPW contract. You can see what the pay, the pay rate is from the start. Kirk LaBarre, while a good employee to the village, I believe did not drive a large truck. So his rate was slightly less.
Right. And Dominic just got his LDC, so he's going to get paid.
And there may be some overtime in there that obviously,
Yeah, right, 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 right.
Dominic's rate will go up if he's an MEO.
So, so you put an extra ten in over the actual in nineteen twenty?
Right.
Okay. So I, I'm comfortable with that. Alan, you, you would propose lowering it?
I, I'm just taking the three fifty-three and, and taking the percent of the year through here, there, and I'm getting around four hundred. So, and in last year's number, we had implicit in it what we were going to give as an increase on the DPW contract. So, you know, we're, we're only picking up one year, but I, you know what? May, maybe it's not a big enough number we should worry about. I just wanted to raise it.
No, no, I, I, thank you. No, I, I, good conversation. We vetted it. Okay, let's move on.
This is a Chris question. Street cleaning contractual eighty-one seven oh four oh A. Do you know what that is, Debbie?
Or let me rephrase it. What is it, Debbie?
I'm going to excuse myself just for a minute.
I'm not sure what he takes out of that category.
I mean, it, it seems crazy that we spent seventy-six dollars this year and we're budgeting four thousand for next year.
Yeah, that's what he put in his budget. So we just copied the number over.
I'm just wondering if it's like, you know, street signs, spades, forks, that kind of stuff. But it, it seems, it seems a, a huge number basis what he spent.
I do.
Honestly, I think it includes pipe and catch base and stuff along that line possibly.
But I mean, why would he, he only spent seventy-six bucks? But I mean, why would he, he only spent seventy-six bucks, so either he did nothing this year or he put it somewhere else.
No, we have to look into what makes up that item.
Yeah.
What was it, item number?
Yeah, if we can just add that to his. Question.
Here, I'm looking it up now to see if what it. But we can move on while I look for it.
All right, the next things are pretty much, uh.
Yeah, here we go. Street cleaning contractual, leaf rakes, stone rakes, forks, tires, tire repairs. Sweeper brooms and parts.
So it just seems like there's no way they only spent seventy-six dollars on that, right? I mean.
No, I I think they did. I think they did.
You don't think they replaced any tires on any vehicles this year?
I think tires.
You know, street cleaning might just be, might just be tires on the street sweeper, if at all. But we have to get clarification from Jeff, but based on what I've seen, he might not have spent even seventy-six dollars.
Can, do you mind, John, just, to Chris's point, just adding that to your list, ask him?
No, I have it in the notes.
Yeah, he could easily be planning on spending it in the next two months, too, as he starts cleaning up after work.
So Debbie, workman's comp. We've gone from historically sixty-five, now we're down to fifty-five. Does that mean, uh, we've had some deaths of former employees that have taken, come off, or what what's this a function of?
No, that was, well, the lower number is because of the payroll audit that's done by PERMA. Um, when we give them the numbers, we have to give them a breakdown of department overtime and double time. And then they use a specific job category number and then they calculate and allocate it according to that job number. So they came in at fifty thousand instead of the sixty-five.
Sorry, they came in when?
Um. Let's see, it was in the fall sometime, that's a revised statement.
So the fifty thousand two seventy-five is a hard number for this year. And. Sorry?
Plus, um, an amount from the water fund. That's our total workers' comp bill.
All right, and and basically we'll have the same scenario this fall when they come in and do a payroll audit?
Well, we send them the information. They don't come in, but.
Right, but but.
Yeah.
That that essence is the same. We we submit data and then they give us what the workers' comp, uh, dollar amount.
I I think, I think the variable is overtime and double time, Alan, in this case.
Okay, so we're basically saying a ten percent increase, uh, predicated that we're doing more overtime, I guess.
Possibly, yeah, yeah.
Which, I mean, I I have. Fine by me, it was just a question.
Yep.
This was a, it's a big drop over the last couple of years, that's all.
We love it.
Maybe, I present in the unemployment there.
Okay.
And Debbie, can we just do the the health insurance? I thought, I I believe we voted on the dental at last board meeting, right?
Yep.
And, uh, yet again, and we've got a decrease going through on that.
Well, last year's actual was only five twenty-one, five eighty.
So we're just, we're just very good. I mean, if you take five twenty-one and this four fifty-eight. How how much more of the year do we have?
Um, what is the?
I mean, I I guess the question is, is the five fifty a high number?
Four sixty-nine, uh, we're currently at four sixty-nine, five hundred.
And and that's what percent of the year?
Um, it's eighty percent, but we always pay a month in advance. So in March, we probably paid April, so technically there's really only May's bill that would be allocated to the twenty-twenty-one budget.
So it sounds like this number's high, then?
Five fifty?
Yeah.
That's, it's possible. But I don't know what the increase, if the percentage increase for next year from NISHIP, we don't have that number yet.
So you put in a plug?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we historically get that number?
Pardon?
Do we know when we get that number?
Next fall?
Yeah, in the fall.
So we have to live with it. We have to live with it. I mean, not that we can't change the number, we can change it, but we have to live with it until the fall. Anyway, uh, in the past, uh, we obviously did the same exercise.
Yeah, I mean, that my my concern is, in the past, we've done it and we are always um, err on being way over. That that's.
So.
May- maybe we.
Yeah, I mean, how much would you propose taking out without going overboard?
I mean, I guess my argument is, why don't we stick, put it five twenty-five, I guess?
Also, you should consider the number for the New York State employment. That number, we never know what it is until December, so it could be that amount or it could be even higher.
Right, but I think that, I think the point is with the same concerns, we've always overestimated. Is that what your point is, Alan?
Yes.
And so you're you're saying take some out, um.
I'm just saying, we know what our actual nineteen-twenty was, which was five twenty-one. We can imply what this year's is, which is going to be, you said. I mean, you.
So.
Five hundred.
Debbie, Debbie, since you put in the plug number and you have the experience, do you think five twenty-five is too risky?
I think they're cutting it close.
Cutting it close, so how about five thirty-five? Or five forty? Would you be more comfortable with that based on your experience?
Yeah, five forty is probably a good number.
Okay, so Alan, would you be satisfied going down to five forty?
Yeah, I I wouldn't even bother changing it for five forty, but I don't understand.
I would, that's ten grand.
I I don't understand Debbie's reluctance for methodology, why why she's going to change.
I guess, I guess the the answer to that is, um, a gut feeling based on experience, I would guess.
Right, and I'm saying our gut gut feeling based on our our budget numbers, we always are egregiously high.
All right, so we've got you wanting to go to five two-five, her wanting to go to forty. You want to split it?
What are you suggesting? Sorry?
You you were thinking five twenty-five and she's thinking five forty. Do you want to meet somewhere in the middle?
Five thirty, I'm happy with. Otherwise, I wouldn't bother changing it.
Okay, let's go to five thirty. And, uh, we'll live with that. Thank you, everyone. Okay, uh, so line nine zero six zero eight zero A. Uh, projected five, uh, what was it, five thirty?
Five thirty, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, moving on.
I mean, I don't think we can really comment on the the debt service because I I I haven't kind of seen a schedule, so I don't have a comfort, I guess. Uh, my only question is.
You have, you, I'm I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to suggest you have the financial report.
Yeah, but not not all the debt and how we've moved things around, but I guess mine, my mine's a more general rather than specific is with regard to the ban that we've done with regard to the current phase that we're doing with Arald Engineering on, uh, where where is the debt reflected there or the interest and, uh, principal payment is.
Right.
Where where is it currently?
I think John and and Tinka can probably respond to that.
Oh, and the debt service?
Yeah.
I mean, I just, you know, prorated it and the accountant looked at the numbers and he thought they looked.
So, so, pro-prorated the note, the borrowing we just did with the EFC?
No, uh, no, uh. Oh, he, I, when I switched things into the water, I mean, to the sewer budget, he looked at the numbers. And he thought overall that that he was satisfied with them. He emailed us, so.
Yeah, so so I I guess, I I think I'm asking the question incorrectly. We've a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project we just endeavored with uh, Arald Engineering with regard to INI. We've got a grant of a hundred and thirty thousand. We've written a check of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Arald Engineer. How is that, uh, being reflected in our financials and our debt?
We didn't, we don't know what the payback is yet. We didn't get anything.
So, so if I hear you correctly, Debbie, we haven't accounted for it yet because we don't know what our our principal and interest payments are, is that?
Yes.
Fairness?
Yes.
All right, but we we do know a ban can only be five years long and then we have to turn it, we have to pay it back or put into long-term financing, right?
Right.
So we can come up with an implicit number, so we just need to figure that out at some juncture.
And that would come out of the sewer.
Sewer, not general.
Yeah, at a sewer, not general.
It's the wrong, he's, it's the wrong item you're referring to, Alan. I mean, I know, I know what you're referring to, I realize the importance in the budget. But that all those, that all those expenses relative to the sewer, which INI is, are all reflective on page five. Your your question is still valid, but it's it's been all removed from here and it's down in the sewer budget.
Right, so that that's fine, but what we're saying is we haven't accounted for it in the sewer budget as of yet. That's all we're saying.
Yes, because we don't know what it is yet.
Right, so we we don't have a total amount of debt. We don't have any principal or interest payments currently.
In the sewer.
In the sewer.
Yeah, the ones in the general fund are correct.
And now, so that everyone knows, um, the sewer budget was done outside of the general ledger. And if we move forward with it, the accountant will be giving us the line-by-line item guidance, including debt service and so forth, so, um. I'm comfortable with that, um, moving forward. Uh, because we'll get right down to each line item, so that that's where I think we're going with that. I think that's a positive thing.
All right, I I guess this is probably for Debbie, just so I can understand. So the principal and interest numbers that are, you're showing, which is the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar pay a payment, right?
Yes.
One twenty-four, five eight three, that's reflecting dam repairs, bond issuance in two thousand seventeen. Road repairs, uh, two thousand seventeen, too, right? Those are the two bond instruments, which is around three point eight million.
Right, it's the latter one, the clubhouse road one?
Well, there's the two thousand ten serial bond, a two thousand eleven serial bond and the two thousand seventeen serial bond, which was totally for the dam. So the other two are allocated between roads and sewer.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm I'm looking at ours as things, so, a- and the descriptors are pretty miserable. So we've got dam repairs in seventeen, which is three point five million, that's self-explanatory. Road repairs in two thousand seventeen is three fifty-two K, that's self-explanatory. Then we have a two thousand eleven bond issuance of five hundred ninety-one K that has no descriptor, and you're saying that is roads or no, dam?
No, two thousand eleven is same categories as the two thousand ten. It was for, um, sewer, roads, uh, sewer building. Water supply and dams.
Okay, so I don't have a two, or ours doesn't have reporting a two thousand ten issuance. She has a, a two thousand eleven and a two thousand twelve issuance defined as improvements. The sum total, one's five ninety-one and others three three seven. Do you agree with those two numbers?
Well, he must be using what's the balance. I don't have the balance that's left after everything that's been paid so far.
Um, yeah, this was outstanding balance.
Yeah, I don't have the outstanding balance in front of me.
Okay. So dumb it down to me, this one twenty-four, five eight three reflects two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Uh.
Two thousand seventeen.
And two thousand seventeen. Uh, those are principal and interest payments there. So the line item nine seven three oh six one A, which is new principal and interest. What's that reflecting?
That should be in the other, down, in the item down below, in the interest. That should not be in that category.
So it's in the wrong line?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to change that.
Good pickup, let's move that. Does that help, Alan?
That answers some questions, yes. It threw me off the new principal and interest.
Good, good, good. Okay, well vetted. All right, uh, what do we have next?
That's, now we're on four or five, I believe.
You want to go to four or five? Paul, you good with that?
Yeah.
Chris?
Sorry, four or five is the water budget, so this.
Hold on one sec, hold on, just one sec. Chris, do you have any questions on three or five?
No, I'm good.
Okay, great. Okay, four or five, please? Um, which is the, what are we, water budget now? Water fund?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, cut, all right, shoot.
So. Well, Alan's thinking here for a sec. Um, on unallocated insurance, the twenty-one thousand, that's, um, one nine one oh four zero.
Zero F.
Under appropriations, that has to go up by thirty percent, I believe.
Regarding the insurance increase?
Right, correct.
Okay, um, do we agree with that, Debbie?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good pickup. Not that I like it, but good pickup. Um. Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, anything above that, Alan and Paul or Chris?
Sorry, Paul's still on three or five, is he?
He's.
That was four or five.
Yeah, but in terms of any line items above that, does anyone have any questions?
I I I do. Line item twenty-one forty F.
Twenty-one forty F, yeah, let's go there.
So the proposed budget, as far as I'm concerned, the number is egregiously low. Um, because we're going out doing, uh, billing now, so at a a minimum, I would. You know, our water consumption or our water billing is higher, given so many more people are.
Yeah. That's a good pickup. I'm, why, why do we, uh, why didn't we use eight hundred as opposed to say eight six six? Anyone know? Um, who?
I'll I'll make a recommendation. I think at a minimum, it should be eight eighty.
Yeah, I love that. Um, Debbie, did you, it it, or John, do you know, uh, how we got eighty? I mean, uh, eight hundred thousand six four one? You're muted, John.
No, I'm sorry, I do not know where the number for water came from.
Okay, uh, Debbie, do you know where that came from, that eight hundred?
It was just a guess.
Just a guess, okay, all right, fine, no problem. All right, so let's, let's move that up.
Uh, was that a guess? That was a guess from a retiree who doesn't have any stakes in the game. Is that what I heard? So I think eight eighty reflects what last year's was, plus the increased amount of residents in the park and increased usage would be my argument for that one.
Yeah, well, we had, because of COVID, you know, we we definitely bumped up, uh, in, uh, last summer for sure. And throughout the year, probably.
Yep.
So, um, yeah, eight eighty. So, um, yeah, eight, eighty, uh, I'm comfortable with that if Paul and Chris and Tinka are.
Sure.
Yeah, just to be clear, we're basically saying it's gonna be bigger than eight, six, six from the prior.
That's what Alan is, that's what Alan is saying, and he's basing that on additional usage because of sales, right Alan?
Correct.
And we, we expect to have another hundred to two, a hundred and fifty or so thousand in billing in the next two months?
Yes.
I don't think so.
Alan?
Yeah.
Did that eight sixty-six include payments from people in the town that owed a lot of money?
A little inflation. Non-recurring expense.
That, that comes from two, we get it, a, we get penalties and interest, so we get it that way. And obviously, you know, you're asking about lump sums, right?
Yeah, rather than billing, unit billing.
Right, well, well, I mean, we, you know, last year, we had that huge settlement of what was it, twenty-odd K, I think it was, or twenty-two K? Where a bank took over a property and uh, we, we were able to get a settlement on uh. Uh, an egregiously uh, late water bill.
Yes.
And so I guess the question is, um, that's non-recurring, so. Do you think that affects your eight, eight number, Alan, or you're?
I, I don't think our, our, our last quarterly water bill is done yet, so. When was the last water bill? Who received the water bill? It was February, right?
I believe the water bills for April are being configured now, maybe we can get a number through, you know, April first.
Two more building cycles?
That means we, this is our last quarter, so you just take a seven twenty-two divided over seventy-five percent.
Yep.
That's, so I, 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 I'm kinda comfortable with my number.
I'm gonna defer to you on that and uh, that would be acceptable to me, uh, unless Paul doesn't think it should be.
Yeah.
Paul?
Works for me.
Okay.
Make that nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, you could go by that.
I, I, I agree, I, I personally. Ja- Ja- John's trying to get me nervous with my number, but I, I thought I was comfortable with eight eighty.
Yeah, based on the math, I'm comfortable with eight eighty, if we still.
I didn't hear what you said, Chris, originally.
Uh, the seven twenty-two number that we have received so far divided by three. You know, is like two forty, add that to seven twenty-two and you're at.
You're about nine sixty, nine sixty.
Yeah. Wow.
I mean, the, the only argument is we're looking at consumption through the balance of the winter, which is a lower consumption. On a seasonality basis, but I, I, I still think the eight eighty to nine hundred is my bet where, where the number will come in.
Okay.
In our fourth quarter, right? Cause the, the bill goes out when?
I think, well, you've got one going out, the April going out now, right? And then you'll have one more quarter.
No, no.
We only have one quarter. Is ending, are, are calendar quarters, right? Correct. Alright, so your, your March thirty-one is going out. April. Mid-April.
The June goes out in, in the next year.
June, June goes out the following.
Oh, oh, I see.
When does April get collected, though? Well, gi- given our, uh, our April gets, i- is due by mid-May. Otherwise, then the penalty charges and then obviously on the village side, we put on the tax roll. Alright, so. Before May thirty-first.
Right.
Right, point withdrawn.
Okay, so uh, should we go above nine hundred or nine hundred, or you want us to keep it at eight eighty?
I, I'm, I'll, I'll stick with my eight eighty.
Chris?
I'm good with eight eighty.
Yep, me too.
Okay, done.
Okay, so. I, I'm not sure where we should put this, but I'll throw it out, here is, uh. We, we are, seem to be in the business having to hire a leak detection firm. To source and find where the leaks in the village are. I personally think we need to create a line item specifically with regard to that or a subset of one. And we need to increase that number because I think it's the best solution for us to. Pick off small, uh, pick off projects and keep on working on finding water losses. We're obviously looking at the pumping data, the, the compound meter in the town and everything and different locations in the park. But this gives, uh, facilitates us moving forward and addressing water leaks. Far quicker than we've done it previously, so I, I, I don't know Debbie where you would recommend it. But I didn't see it in Jeff's budget, but I'd certainly argue that's a line item we should seriously think about putting in.
Yeah, and, and I have a que- a couple of questions, do we have meters on both sides of the lake? Uh, where the pipe goes underneath in Tuxedo Lake?
Unfortunately, the answer is no, there's been discussions. Many different times with uh, the engineers with regard to doing that, but we haven't done it.
Okay, next question, similar question, uh, you know, that section of road, uh, Route seventeen? That we backed off of a while back?
Yep, by Chase Bank.
Uh, yeah, the, the one that was, came in way, way over a million or something.
Million three, yep.
Yeah, do we have meters on both sides of that?
No, we don't.
Okay, so I, you know, so then, I mean, I think in addition to the leak detection. I, I don't think that's really gonna be a line item, right? Because it's DPW. But there might be some equipment associated, but I, I definitely agree with putting in some more uh, money for uh. Leak detection.
Yeah, I, I.
Unless it's hidden somewhere that we don't realize.
Yeah, but I, I guess my, my view is that we want to highlight it. Because we wanna impress the importance the trustees have on solving our water losses. And this is a great metric to measure the people who are running the department going, we want this money spent. In order to address this.
Yeah, I have no problem, I think that's absolutely fine, the issue is what, what line item would be the appropriate one to, to do something, to pull something out? Because I don't know, I'm sure we have one, or we could na- we could name it ourselves, like we could go. Just off the top of my head, eight, three, four, zero, four, zero, F dash one, I mean, that could, you know.
Debbie, do you think the transportation distribution equipment's light, right item, or is it?
Not equipment, um, you could add the number eight, three, four, oh, four, one, under transmission contract.
And what would that be?
And then label that water detection.
Okay, good, that's an extra number?
Detection, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, that makes sense.
That's the line item, we got seventy-three hundred dollars.
Right.
And, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, the daily rates sixteen hundred dollars just ballpark?
I think sixteen fifty.
Okay, so let, let's say inflation, so seventeen hundred, and what do we want, a minimum two weeks a year? So four times fourteen?
You know, I, I really think if we have them in on a regular basis, once a month. For a day or two, and then the following weeks, we repair the leaks, I think if we do that on a regular, consistent basis, we'll make progress.
Right, rather than a two, right, okay, yeah, that makes sense too, uh, management-wise, project management-wise, so that would be, um. If you wanna go two days, Alan, you're looking at twenty-four.
We're talking basically twenty-four K ballpark, right?
Right, so yeah, twenty-four, well, twenty-four times seventeen hundred.
Sorry, I, I was thinking tw- twelve, twelve times a year, sorry, John, what were you saying?
Well, I, I think I would, I really didn't mention how many days, but you're saying maybe twice, can we say two days a month?
I'm saying two days a month, recognizing that in the winter, we're not, you know.
Right, that's a good point, too.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've got, in the winter, we kinda deal with those things when there's an emergency or we notice something dramatic. But in terms of ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, so you wanna do, you wanna do eighteen, eighteen days?
You know, you might do more in the summer, why don't, why, I'd be a client to leave it at the. Or recognizing there's some seasonality and call it forty thousand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, too, and, and we could just play with it, play with it. In terms of scheduling, but yeah, let's do, let's do seventeen hundred by twenty-four. For leak detection.
So forty, forty thousand eight hundred, yep.
Everyone good with that?
And we're calling that eighty-three, four, oh, four, oh, F one.
Oh, four, one, four, one.
Four, zero, four, one, F.
Okay, alright, that's, that's, I think that's a good idea to highlight that.
I mean, it, I think it's a good management tool, too. And I also think it communicates to the community that we're trying to address the situation we know is bad. And we're, yeah, moving forward with that.
Interesting, I talked to a Houston Stevens, former mayor Houston Stevens, the other day. When, you're gonna, you're gonna hate this, it was when he got it down to fifty, sixty percent. And it just shows you how mu- much worse the leaks have gotten since then, because we're in the same spot. After all we've done.
Hey, the other thing that I think this benefits, if, if you, if we're finding these leaks. And creating more pressure in the system, then we, I assume we'll expect better performance out of the fire hydrants.
Yeah, and, and as I mentioned yesterday, I think we might wanna allocate some money for fire hydrant, uh, pressurization.
Well, just replacing the fire hydrants, which is, I think John had gotten a quote, John, what was it? Five or six thousand dollars for a fire hydrant, it was something obscenely expensive.
I think we've come to the conclusion that we could keep the same hydrants. But put in uh, pressure increases uh, on near or about, um. But that hasn't been, that hasn't been engineered yet, but I ju- I'm just wondering if we should put something in, though, for that.
So. So, um, I know Tinka had a discussion with, um. Some members of the fire district, I think he might have been in part of that, two mayor, or at least John, but. Um, they were gonna, the chiefs and some of the leadership of the fire department are gonna look at some strategic locations. For where it would be ideal. To have high-performing hydrants and then we can go from there.
Okay, so that would, that would be a new hydrant, you're saying, rather than just adding pressure?
Because you don't know how to add pressure, um, versus changing a hydrant, I, I did see a spreadsheet yesterday that. That showed flow is better on new hydrants, so I don't know what. There, there's room, there's definitely a plan, will be a plan moving forward.
Right, so that would be engineering fees and uh, cost of materials. Do you wanna put something in, everyone? What do you think? I mean, I think it's important to do and we, we do have some surplus.
Yeah.
Sorry, we, we, we're doing this with regard to.
Uh, we're, uh, we're talking about upgrading the fire hydrants and increasing the pressure in general in certain critical locations. Where the, the flow is not as strong as we'd like it to be.
Right, I think we use.
And this is based on the fire department's analysis.
I think we do what United Water does, we try, charge the fire department for divulging where our water pressure is. And then we use that to self-fund it.
There you go. They could have a bake sale.
Exactly, so I, I don't have a problem, I, I'm just wondering if we put that under engineering. And we bumped the engineering higher to reflect that, because I think, you know, that, that's. Going to take a fair amount of work and uh, there, there could be some negative causality effects.
Yes, I, I, I think that if we put this in, we should definitely increase the engineering fees and. We should also uh, just pick an arbitrary, I mean, whether it's fifty grand, I, I have no idea. But, you know, and I, I'd also like to see this as a separate line item, Alan.
So, I mean.
Eighty-three, forty, four, two, F.
I, I guess for, for me. Con- conceptually, I, I think it's at early stages, I think it's something we've looked at, we recognize. But I think we need, you know, leak detection, I see as a separate line item. Me- me- metering, you know, either from Chase Bank under, underneath uh, the Ramapo River. It's something we definitely should do if it's possible. But I, I think that would, my gut would be, we bump up the engineering to reflect it. And then we can create subsets within the engineering budget, but I think we're gonna need to have experts brought in to give us. The advice in order to do that, so.
Yeah, alright, that's fine, let's, let's do that, um, the, uh, yeah, let's do that then, um, what are you thinking?
I mean, we, we've got tw- uh, twenty-five K, my gut tells me, I, you know. I'm pretty sure the fire meters were five or six K, so I. My gut is we probably need to do sixty to seventy-five K on that number to reflect.
I think, what are there about five or six critical locations that we've been, we're talking about here? Chris?
You know. You could, you can pick a number, right, and say if you had to pick five hydrants that you could rely on, where would they be?
Right, right, and obviously we go to the, to the worst, um, and the highest, probably, and.
So, just so you know, you gotta, you gotta remember, a fire truck can stretch like a mile worth of hose.
Right, so you can go down to the lake with your pumper.
Yeah, I'm not, look, I'm not super concerned, I'm more concerned with manpower in the fire department than actual fire hydrants working. But we have the money to address it, it just makes sense to do it.
Right, so if you, if you're taking the worst five, Alan, uh, and that, and you had said, what, it's a seven grand a pop?
I, 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 I thought, I, I remember it was looked at maybe three or four years ago, I thought they were around six K. Which just shocked me for a fire hydrant, so you're talking thirty K before you're talking about. Installation and obviously that's DTW expense and everything and time, but uh, yeah.
Why don't we put in thirty for this year and then bump up engineering by five or something?
So we do thirty for replacement fire hydrants. And we're gonna put that under the, the same, that transportation and distribution, the, the one Debbie. So we do a subset after leak detection, that would be fire hydrant replacement.
Yes.
And then I, I would, I'd be more inclined, especially given the Department of Health issues. That the engineering number probably should be nudged up a little bit more than uh, the twenty-five K.
Alright, so, right, so adding, I suggest adding five to that.
Yeah, so Mayor?
Yeah.
And I, I think what you're gonna see this year with, uh, if there's gonna be an infrastructure bill. Is there will be the, you know, ability to try and, and try and get some of that, which is gonna require some engineering help.
Right, that's true, yeah.
Doing that, so.
Shovel ready.
I guess maybe bumping that up a little bit more. Twenty-six is past year, I almost consider maybe forty or even double. So I, I, I'll have two comments.
Where were you, Paul, when we went, already went through this? That's a good idea.
Well, um, hang, hang on, hang on, we, we've got two shelf-ready projects right now, right? We've got, we've bifurcated the East Village. And we're ready if, uh, we have grants become available to apply for that and uh, Weston Sampson's been looking for that. And we also have the pipe under Tuxedo Lake. Where we've, you know, we signed approval, I guess, last August or something with regard to that. So we, we've got, the key is having shelf-ready projects that when a grant becomes available, we can go after it. Because I think we get sixty percent of the cost of the projects covered by the grant, so.
And just a, a comment, um, unfortunately, this is what all municipalities are gonna be doing, they're gonna take. Going to fund and then use government funding instead, so you're not getting the double dose of, of new projects in infrastructure, that's unfortunate. Uh, to update you on the, on the pipe under the uh, lake. Um, where, uh, Joe is in communication with the DEC and or health, I'm not sure which, or maybe both. But uh, he, he went to, he's looked at some new uh, updated material. As you know, the, they want us to bury this pipe underneath. But uh, our, our claim is, you know, granite and cost prohibitive. Um, there's a new system that's available that he's uh, working with for not just us, but other customers to get approval. It, it's a more flexible pipe. That uh. Lays on top of the water with weights. Lays on top of the water with weights. And slack on one end and you, you sink it to the bottom. Uh, that would be a tremendous savings for us, um, but either way, you're right, we can get that prepared and, and hopefully get some money for that. So, uh, that said, um, should we double the twenty-five to fifty?
Well, sorry, so, I, I was.
The engineering fees.
I, I, I was trying to argue against Paul's, no, I think it should be increased a bit, but I guess my point was, we have a couple shelf-ready projects, one. And two is, uh, that current engineering, a good chunk of that is function of us, um, doing the water control plan.
Mm-hmm.
Where, you know, so we've replaced all the, the beds at the sewer plant. Um. We've upgraded the computer system there, we've put a new generator in, I mean.
Right, and we, and we also have to take up, we're gonna have to take on new costs, um, to meet their flow requirements, and that's gonna be, I think it was sixteen grand, I'm not sure. John, do you remember what that was?
Th- this was the Clearwell. You're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I, I don't know if Jeff reflected that in his budget. My guess is no.
No.
My guess is maybe we should. Put, put that in, because it's a new requirement that we didn't know about and should be reflected in the budget.
Right, uh, John, do you remember, and that, and has to be voted on, John, do you remember what, uh, the, uh, cost was?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have that right in front of me.
It was, I think it was sixty, Tinka, do you remember, was it sixteen grand, remember option one? Where he's gonna take the dividers and put them into the vat or tank? There is a drawing available, did, Alan, did you receive the, uh, did we send out, uh, the answers to questions one and two, one and three?
Through the full board?
John, you know? This is the listing of the engineering projects?
No.
Yeah, the questions one and, one and three, where he gave the six solutions and recommended one?
Oh.
Okay, let's get that out to those guys, you'll. And I think the estimate was sixteen thousand, but, uh, but let's get that out to those guys, but the point is, we should add it, let's, let's.
I think we, we, we should add that underneath. Fire hydrants. In that line item, for a lack of better way, so we're just highlighting and we use the number that your best reflection is, I don't think, I don't have a.
Forty-two, it would be forty-three, because we just put in a forty-two.
Yeah. Right, Debbie? Just left.
Understand.
So.
All right, so it's, it's one sixteen, um, and we're, we still obviously have more work to do, what, do you guys want to take a break? Uh, and post returning at so-and-so time, uh, do you want to, you know, close the meeting and have another one later? Uh, oh no, we can't do that, we have to leave it open and then come back, um, because of.
How about we have a break for half an hour, reconvene at two, something like that, quarter to two.
And, John, if you could take a piece of paper and write, uh, on break, we'll return at so-and-so time and post that up in case anyone joins us. And so Alan, that would be, uh, like basically quarter of two?
Yeah.
Uh, Chris, are you able to do that, or were you scheduled only for one o'clock?
But, uh, make it work on this.
Tinka?
On Friday night.
Okay, I'll assume that's a yes, give a thumbs up, because you have your. You're muted, you okay with, uh, taking a half hour break, thumbs up or thumbs down?
Uh, yeah, I have to leave, I have an appointment at two.
Okay, okay, um.
Who, who's in control of the spreadsheet right now?
John.
John, so just to make it easy, John, under fire hydrants, can you put a subsection with regard to? Uh, another, add another line, which is, you know, DOH. Purification or whatever you want to call it, with regard to the David was mentioning seventeen thousand one hundred.
Oh, you got the number?
No, I was just using your number, just so we have a marker, so when we come back, we're not arguing this, and then we, we take the engineering. And shall we just bump it from twenty-five to thirty-five and then we can all reconvene and discuss it?
Uh, well, I think Paul wanted, I, I, I thought doubling, but I, uh, thirty-five sounds good to me, but I don't know if that takes into account. You know, the, the grant applications that Paul was referring to.
Well, we've, we can always, we can always, you know, if we need to transfer more out of the, you know, out of the surplus to handle a particular situation, we can do that.
Okay, so we'll just go to thirty-five, because we know that's a hard cost, pretty much.
Just in terms of, of timing as well, I, I have a conflict that I think at two-thirty.
Okay, so do you want to, um, now, if we schedule another, if we schedule a follow-up meeting for, say, tomorrow. What do we do about the public hearing date, which I think we need five days, Chris said, to. You know, of advanced warning.
So, so we have to post this tentative budget tonight in order for the five days notice.
For the.
Right. Being on the fourteenth.
Or we have to reschedule the hearing, and what does that do to us?
Well, we have to have the, we can't, the hearing has to be on the fif, by the fifteenth.
Okay, well, there's flexibility there.
Right, well, we didn't do it on the fifteenth, because it conflicted with another board meeting, but, um, for the bar, I think it was.
Well, we're on Zoom, how does that conflict?
Well, maybe bar members want to hear about the budget.
Oh, please.
Okay, anyway.
Anyway.
So, just.
All right, give me some input, guys, I need some help here.
We could also just close this meeting, have the budget tentative as is, and then start talking, hacking it up some more after the public hearing, after we get the public.
Then we have to have another public hearing.
So we can, and.
Oh, sorry, Paul.
Sure, so we can, um, plug on for another, you know, uh. Forty minutes or an hour or so with a, with a shorter break and get through what we can get through here.
Right, it, well, if we could finish and we could then agree with all the changes, uh, that would be then made, we would authorize it to be posted.
And just to, to Chris's, just to Chris's point, I mean, the public hearing is, is scheduled, right, it's scheduled for the fourteenth.
Right.
You know, even if, even if we don't get everything done and all agreed to, the, whatever the tentative budget is at that time, could in theory. You know, go out without a.
Right, and, because we have five days of the public hearing, right?
Right.
So we can make those adjustments then.
Right, so I'm just, you know.
No, Mayor, I'm sorry, the one thing we can't do, as my understanding is, 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 um, once we, you know, within this five-day period.
Mm-hmm.
Can't change, you know, the budget in terms of what. Goes out.
So, um.
Sorry, can I just play devil's advocate here?
Sure.
Let, let's just say, we've done, we, it sounds like we've all agreed on the changes that we've discussed so far, so. If we just close this meeting now. Obviously, we have some outstanding issues, but we've modified it, cleaned it up a fair amount, where we're all comfortable. And everything, we go in, we hear the public comment, then we have the additional information from Jeff, we might have some granularity there. Then we still have the opportunity to modify and amend the budget over, you know, from the board meeting through April thirtieth. So it's, we're not boxing ourselves out by going, this is what we've cleaned up and we spent.
Well, yeah, no, I, I agree, let me ask you, how do you guys, I mean, obviously, uh, I, what, what's your general view, straw poll, about the sewer department?
I'm inclined to support the idea, I, the only question I had is, you know, we're gonna hire a sewer consultant, should we have, just hear what this consultant says before we. Create a sewer department?
No, they're only about rates.
Okay, then I'm for it.
So.
Yeah. Uh, Paul, what about you?
So, um, I, I, I'm inclined, I, I like the idea of having, you know, the sewer chargers more closely associated with, with, um, usage and. Is a good starting point, although there will be some wrinkles. The issue I have, though, is that when you, when you add, you know, the tax, real estate taxes and the sewer charges together. Um, that adds into a number that is, you know, a, a substantially heavy payment burden on our, and our population. In other words, if you're gonna take all the charges that are in this, in the sewer budget and, and, and collect taxes on them, we would be way over the cap. So, bundling those two together is in effect a, a very substantial increase in, um. Combined, you know, taxes and usage fees to our, to our population.
Yes, and it's warranted because of the infrastructure demands. And, um, it were, it's warranted, I mean, the fact is, we have a need to, uh, charge for. Uh, use of the sewer, um, because of the infrastructure that we're facing, that's, that's, I, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I, I would not characterize it that way with a heavy burden. Um, if you were just to take the number we have now, the five hundred thousand eight, I think it is, divide that by the three hundred and thirty, uh, users we have. Um. It would be seventeen hundred divided by four payments per year per person, but that wouldn't be what we would do, because that would be based on, that's just based on evenly spreading it across. Uh, and then there's also people that will no longer have to pay the sewer in their property taxes and they'll be very appreciative as well. So, so I, I do see it as, I mean, it's, it's a rent, but, but, uh, it's necessary.
Right, so my back of the envelope was taking the, um, you know, if you took the, the water bill, right, which is the, you know, now eight hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, and you took the. And you took the, um, the sewer charges, which were about seven hundred thousand, so people would be paying about, you know, seven eighths of whatever their water bill was, if that was sort of the baseline.
Yeah, and I think, um, in terms of, so if we can, all right, so these are plug numbers, well, the, the, this is a general strategy applied here. Things could change, um, maybe we don't include certain things like past infrastructure costs, uh, and so forth, but if, if you're good with. Uh, the idea of having a sewer department, I think we should move forward as per what Alan said. Uh, about finishing the meeting and being able to print a tentative budget.
I, I think whether we're, we're good or not, um, we should leave this for the public hearing so that we can get their opinion.
Right.
So, I think we do what Alan suggested, close the meeting today, have a public hearing and then come back and rework the wickets.
Right, because you know, you know, and I'll, I'll kind of echo Paul's view, I don't, yeah, uh, separating the sewer. Uh, and having a sewer district, however, or however we want to parse it, and, you know, cha-charging people appropriately. I don't have a problem with that and it's probably a, a, a good thing overall, uh, my gut is. Let's see how people respond and, uh, we can adjust accordingly.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe by, maybe by then we can get some, uh, some further, uh, clarity about what rates might be.
Right, so I, I kind of look at this as, we've kind of chewed through a lot of stuff. Now, now where you're, you're putting a trial balloon, showing it to the public, let's see what feedback we get, and then we can have budget workshops. Uh, a basis, what feedback we get and what we collectively or individually think what's appropriate, I mean, I, I personally think it's not a bad way to go.
Yeah, okay, uh, how about you, uh, Tinka?
Well, you know how I feel.
Okay, well, I just wanted to share that, Tinka supports it, um, but I also support, you know, taking a hard look at these numbers and line items and. Making sure that, you know, things are where they're supposed to be, we did get a blessing from the accountant, but still, um. All right, so if everyone agrees, what we'll do is have to vote on posting this. And it will be based on the, uh, the changes we've made and agreed on. And we'll post it tonight and we'll meet our public hearing deadline, is that what we're saying?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes, but before we do, can we just put a number in for the fire hydrants in the DOH?
I, oh, we didn't do that yet, that's what that red line is, yeah, so it's thirty thousand.
Mayor?
Sir.
One other sort of significant component here dealing with, um, lakes management and.
Oh yes, let's discuss that.
Yeah, so.
All right, let's go, let's discuss that, now, uh, are you simpatico with, uh, taking the, the two smaller lakes and putting them in under the water budget?
No.
And the reason would be?
The reason would be that we, we went through this, you know, um, a few years ago, uh, and consulted with the DEC a- as well, um, there's really, there's really. No basis for considering, um, pond number three or the Weewah as a, as a backup water supply to, um, you know.
Except that it's in our village code.
I know, but there's no, there's no, there's no way to get the water there, there's, it, it is not possible.
It is possible with a pumper truck.
All right, so, um, so the position that the, the village has taken previously. Is, is that, you know, that's, it's really not, it, it's really not viable as a, you know, as a, as a backup water supply. And then it becomes a question of, um, are you charging, you know, our, our town water customers. Uh, for lakes management on pond number three and, and the Weewah? And the, you know, advice we got, um, both from our lakes consultants, a matter of practice and kind of common sense, is that you real, you really can't do that, um, you really, it's not.
Well, I mean, you sound sincere and I believe that you believe it, but the, the, the fact is, you can use it as a reserve supply, i- if there's an emergency. And it should be included in the water bill, because, uh, our village code, code demands that.
All right.
And, sorry, when you take it out of the general budget, uh, it lowers that, so, I mean, I did run it by the accountant, I did not run it by the DEC or the lakes manager, I don't really care what the lakes manager says. But I do care what the DEC, DEC says.
So, I, I'll, I'll throw in my two cents, um. I, I agree with Paul, uh, the nuances, our lakes and our dams were reclassified. Uh, our engineer, in discussions with the DEC, agreed that they were not. Uh, secondary water sources for our water plant, so I, I think we're treading on thin ice and I don't think it's worth it for thirty K. Especially when we have the ire of the residents in the town that we're not investing in infrastructure to provide them. With a service, but we're willing to clean, uh, the lakes of Eurasian water mill file and things like that, I just think the optics. Are not great and on top of that, I, whilst the village code might say that, I think the village code's probably. Uh, antiquated in that regard and engineer and the DEC have a totally different opinion. So, I just don't think it's, I don't think the upside.
I hear it, what do you think, Chris?
I mean, if, if that's true, that, and I'm, I have a reason to doubt it, that the DEC and engineers don't recognize that as a secondary water source, then I agree, it should be part of the water budget.
Okay, so what I recommend then is we put it back in the general. And, uh, if it, if we find out any new information in time for this year, we'll make a change, if we don't, we won't. You know, that we would all agree on. So, let's, let's take it out and put it back in the general.
I'm sorry, what specific line item was that?
Okay, it's thirty thousand, uh, but, but that's gonna change, okay, so let me, let me go through what I did, my assumptions on the lake management. Um, we had a hundred, uh, in last year, we had a hundred in water. Uh, for Tuxedo Lake and Lake Manager and those shares, then we had thirty for Pond Three and, uh, Weewah, so when I brought it over. Um, it was one thirty was, uh, what we did last year, uh, we did not spend that much and I knocked it down to eighty. Uh, what's included there? What's included is, um, money for, uh, Dash.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, money for, uh, Procellicor. Uh, and, uh, money for AJ Near, but he's asking for forty upset fee, I'd like to limit it to twenty upset fee. And so the, the, that's what I did with that budget.
Okay, so. Okay, so I I think if you just put that number, if that, that's the number you want in the general. I have no problem there. One comment I'll make is Jim Hayes in his report has us spending two hundred K. On lakes management this fiscal year, so that's where I took umbrage with the numbers that were given to Jim. Because he is off by hundreds of thousands of dollars on what we've spent versus the numbers he was given. Which threw me off on his long-term plan.
Oh, okay, now, I just remembered, we have to go into executive session before we break. Because we need to go over salaries.
Well, we can do that after the public hearing.
Yeah, I think we do that at the public hearing.
Okay, so, so, alright, so that said, Alan. Uh, Paul, how much do you think we need for uh, Pond Three and Weewa for the Dash?
Well, um. Let's see, what did we have last year? I think we had.
Six or eight?
I thought it was eleven and then we had Elizabeth Conchnor, remember, wanted to do some additional on.
Right, she paid them directly. So was it eleven?
We had thirteen, we had thirteen and um, twenty-two for near.
What are we, what did we spend? Right, what did we, oh, I see what you did, you, you gave the max, the, that's the contract. What, what did we spend on on Dash last year? Cause the recommendations we're getting is to be able to repeat that.
Right, but we had just, and we spent eight K, I think it was, on Procellcore on Pond Number Three.
Right.
And I, I didn't, I couldn't understand his verbiage, whether or not he was recommending. Procellcore for Pond Number Three this uh, this year or not. Or he was just re- recommending that.
I I think we, I I would go with, um, you said eight and eleven. Paul, do you know the actual spend last year on Dash?
I, I don't, but I know what we were allocating toward it, so we were allocating. Uh, seventy-five hundred for Procellcore and Pond Three and our assumption was, I recall. That Dash or Procellcore would cost about the same thing.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so why don't we, why don't we double it, uh, get, that gives us the option, uh. And put that in to Pond Three and Weewa under the general budget and then a portion of the twenty thousand dollars. I'm recommending as an upset fee.
So that, so that eight was for Pond Three and Dash was twelve uh, in 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 the Weewa.
Okay, okay, so that's twenty hard cost. Um, for, to put back under the general, into the general fund under lakes management. And we should also take a portion of his contract and put that there as well. And I'm, what I'm suggesting is, uh, you work with the number, we work with the number twenty thousand as an upset fee. Um, which is more realistic. And uh, so take, how however you apportioned it last year between, you know, you took his contract and split it. In certain, a certain way, uh, between the three lakes, right?
So I don't, I guess, look, I I guess we're getting a little bogged down in the question of what lakes management should be, but I I sort of question why. Why are we cutting back in terms of our, you know, of our um, of water management? Last year's was about forty, a little more, this year he's proposing about forty and if you, if you go through it, it's probably split. Pretty much fifty-fifty between um, between Tuxedo Lake and the other lakes when you, when you sort through it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna insist on more efficiency. We're not getting our product, uh, it's always late. Um, this is his wish list. Uh, I don't know what those, that forty thousand you're saying was what we spent, I don't know what was involved in that, I don't know if that's just hourly. But, you know, his contract is hourly and he, and he gives us an upset fee, so he wanted forty. Uh, let's hold him to twenty.
I think his contract is um, is task-specific.
And what, since you're saying not break it down, you have, do you have that numbers in front of you as to?
Well, look, you could look at his, look at his contract, sure.
Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, it, you know, as far as I'm concerned, in addition. Um, Jim's working on the ten-year plan. And do we want to keep spending forty thousand plus a year? On lakes management when we really know what we need to do? But anyway, what is, let's see the breakdown, maybe that's a, that's a bad assumption on my part.
Well, I get, you know, it's sort of, um, how many? Um, lake visits do you want him to do?
Right, well, what what is he accomplishing the lake visits?
So you measure, um, you measure your uh, your nutrients, you measure your chemicals. You measure your, you know, your data points, which was gone through in a, in a fair degree of detail over the last couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you take them, you analyze them.
Understood, so what what is the number of visits that we currently have agreed in his contract that he calls for?
Uh, ten on Tuxedo Lake.
Mm-hmm. Uh. Ten visits on Tuxedo Lake.
Four in the Weewa and. Uh, five on Pond Three.
Mm-hmm, and those are followed by quarterly reports?
Those historically uh, were followed by um, by requested email updates. And then there is an annual sort of comprehensive report.
Mm-hmm.
That he does, both on um, both on uh, a macrophyte sampling and on on water quality.
Mm-hmm.
Now, but to your point, to your point, he had, he is way behind on what he should have given us for um, for the.
All the time.
His water quality.
I mean, if if the idea of having a lakes manager come visit, check your water and give you a report in case you need to make an adjustment. Eh, we're wasting our money because by the time we get the reports, it's changed already or the damage is already done. So I I'm I'm sort of hoping to put his feet to the fire. If we were to hold him to twenty and decrease certain things or whatever. Uh, and we decided we need more testing. Would you think it would be fair to go into another fund and pay for it that way? In other words, not put it in the budget?
Well, but let's say, let me say, so we don't, he doesn't do the sort of testing that's like E. coli testing where you, we. You do a measurement and you say, oh my God, we have a problem here, we have to, you know, do Y or Z. Jeff does that to the DPW.
Mm-hmm.
His testing and analysis is, i- 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 is, is deeper in a way and more instructive. And that's what he does to get an idea of how, how our lake is changing over time.
Right.
Those trends are, so it's not, um, while, you know, while he might be here and be able to give us an early warning. For example, of a um, algae bloom.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's really not his function so much, his function is more of collecting this data. Analyzing it on more or less an annual basis.
Mm-hmm.
That's that kind of, that kind of granular information about what's happening in terms of nutrients. What's happening in terms of, you know, the the thermal client in the lake and whether, you know, getting, uh, we're getting that way.
Alright, so I guess the test uh, is what report over the years? Has he given us where we've taken action?
Well, can I just ask, when was the last time we saw a work product from him?
Well, a really good question, the answer is, I I I haven't seen. Anything, well, did we, did we even get a finished work product? Last year, Paul came in, what, May? When it was due in February?
No, no, we got, we got, we got our, we got our um, our macrophyte survey. Um, in January, I think, which is the the milfoil report, you know, the things that. Uh, and we got our water quality report in in February. And we were able to incorporate the information and the recommendations that are in the water quality report. Into our lakes management plan for uh, for last spring and summer. Because we had that information there and we had a set of recommendations. So if you remember, we did actually had um, a fairly lengthy discussion and presentation that was done. In conjunction, uh, both prior to and in conjunction with the budget that laid out what the lakes manager was recommending. Uh, what Alan and I thought we might do a little bit differently in that context and we actually, what we actually wound up doing.
Mm-hmm, well, it'd be nice to have that in hand now that we're doing the budget rather than just his proposed forty grand.
Right, you're saying that was January, February of twenty twenty?
Does January, February, February of twenty twenty, twenty twenty, yes, exactly.
Okay, so we've paid this guy how much in the last year and haven't seen anything?
Forty.
Right, so.
So I, look.
We have seen, we have seen the macrophyte report, right? That's one of his two work products.
And what do we do with it? What do we, what's the action we took?
Well, what we should have been, what, what, so, uh, what did it tell us?
That's the question I'm asking. What, 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 what action, what was actionable?
It told us uh, where we were in terms of Eurasian water milfoil, which was that we had a successful treatment in Pond Number Three. From a Procellcore treatment. It told us where we were on uh, Eurasian water, water milfoil in Tuxedo Lake. You know, in October, uh, and it told us where we needed to do work in in the Weewa uh, later in the year. So we added on additional harvesting.
I I feel that we already have that knowledge.
This, I, you know, Tinka's got to go.
Thank you, Tinka.
He's already gone. Um, you know, we can have this lengthier debate, I think, after the public hearing. But I, I'd like to be able to wrap this up now and I I, you know, might be worthwhile to look at that report. I don't remember seeing it. The last one you mentioned, Paul.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I can tell you that milifol is growing in Tuxedo Lake. And Dash worked.
So I I, I just want to see their. After the public hearing, how about that to save some time?
Yep, I'm good, I'm good with that, so we just leave it for now and then we need to vote.
Uh, agreed, so what we're agreeing is, we're moving into the general budget. We're gonna leave everything, we adjusted the changes we all discussed and clicked to the agreed to. Everything else will stay unchanged, we'll vote on it right now. So you can, i- it can be posted today for the, the fourteenth or fifteenth or whatever day it is.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all in agreement on that. What do we, what do we call this budget? Uh, is it still the tentative budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, effective today.
Can I just jump in quickly here? Um, I just wanted to let you know, I did solve the mystery about that um, uh, budget code one four four, one point four. And why there was such a change between what was here and reported in March and what we show now. And that was because on some of the, uh, that was because on some of the bills, I um. Looking back, I realized that I did not code them properly, so I recoded them. And um, I can send you a, you know, a breakout of it if you want, but it does add up perfectly. The difference between what's on March seventeenth and what I have now. Or if I can explain it right now, it doesn't take that long. I just don't know if you're sick of the meeting and you're ready to.
Yeah, I I think.
Everybody.
Yeah, if you can just send us something hard written, cause I think everybody's getting tired and wants to.
Sure, I will do that as soon as the meeting ends and also I just wanted to say very quickly. Um, uh, one item on the agenda is other matters that may come before the board. There's one quick thing I wanted to do, so I don't want us to break before we do that.
Oh, and that's the toll, I mean, the voting, okay, alright, let, can you read that resolution and I'll, I'll accept it?
I didn't actually type up a resolution, but I'll just make one up now, uh, resolve to approve the following of. People to be machine operators at the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one uh, village of Tuxedo Park election. And that will be Kurt Ha- How, I don't know how you pronounce it, H A U G, and Wendy Doolin. And resolve to approve the following table inspectors to work on June fifteenth. And they are Desiree Hickey, Elizabeth Ochiang, and Jennifer Weiss.
Uh, I will adopt that.
Somebody make a motion, Mac, you make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. All in favor?
I, I have to do that, Elizabeth.
Sorry.
No problem. Alright, so uh, may I have a second?
Alan seconded.
Yeah, no, but we're starting over.
Yeah, sorry, second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all in.
Two twenty-five, i- they'll each get paid two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Okay, alright, let's start over. So um, read, okay. It adop- adopted with an addition uh, fee, which is, how much per person?
Two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Two hundred twenty-five dollars per person. May I have a second?
Second.
All in, but any discussion? All in favor?
Thanks.
Ah, okay, and uh, Paul, do you want to guide us through uh, the resolution to accept this tentative budget as of this date?
Well, I'll take a crack at it.
Um, yep.
Uh, now that the tentative budget as um. Proposed uh, and distributed under cover of the clerk's April first twenty twenty-one. Email um, be revised as uh. Reflected in the um. Be be revised, such revisions to be. Reflected in a document to be prepared by, um, who's preparing this?
Uh, Elizabeth.
Uh, and adopted.
I think, yeah.
By um, the village clerk, be um. Proposed as the uh, tentative budget, uh, to be uh, tentative budget. Uh, to be um, the subject of the public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Ask for a second and I'll.
A second.
Okay, uh, all, any discussion? Um, all in favor?
Alright.
Bye.
Bye.
Uh, I just want to thank everybody, that was a very, very productive meeting. Um, everyone's comments, observations were terrific. Uh, I think that we really tuned this thing up and uh, so I'm very pleased about that. So uh, anyway, um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Eight, one second, mayor.
Sure.
Just Elizabeth, when you post this notice on the webpage, you gotta also include the proposed salaries for the trustees. It's in the village law for New York.
Thank you. Uh, any other final comments, anybody before I adjourn? Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, bye, everybody.